This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Girl Scouts troops will be bringing in the flags and leading the flag rally.
Girl Scouts attention. Color guard attention. Everyone please rise and remove any unofficial headgear. Color guard advance. Color guard salute the colors. Color guard honor your colors. We will now say the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard retreat. Everyone may now be seated.
Thank you to the girls that participated in the flag ceremony. Greatly appreciated and fun to have you here. Welcome to the Girl Scout troops of Eau Claire. It was a great afternoon.
I don't have my microphone on. Again, welcome to all of you joining us here in a Monday city council meeting for December 9th. During our Monday meeting, the Eau Claire City Council conducts public hearings, listening sessions, and public discussion where residents in our community are invited and encouraged to ask questions and weigh in on important decisions we will be making at our legislative session either tomorrow at 4:00 PM in these council chambers or in coming weeks and months ahead. We want to thank Valley Media Works for live streaming this proceeding. To those of you not able to join us in person to watch, please visit ValleyMediaWorks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. There's also Simon and Cass at 101.9 FM. And you can find past meetings on YouTube under the Triple Valley Media Works channel. If you plan to address the council this evening, I will briefly review the protocol. Once an agenda item is introduced, staff will present them that item and following the presentation, council may have questions to clarify an issue. We then will open the item for public input. Once the item is open for comment, please come forward one at a time. When you approach, please begin by announcing your name and your address and then begin sharing your comments. We welcome you to speak for five minutes. You will see three lights before you. The first light is green, which will illuminate when you begin speaking. It will then turn yellow when there is one minute left to speak. When the light turns red, that indicates that you've reached your five minutes and I will politely ask you to bring your statement to a close. Sometimes council members will ask you follow-up questions, so please give us a moment before leaving the podium. If you wish to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period at the end of the meeting. If you haven't done so yet, there is a sign up sheet on the desk at the back of the room and you're welcome to sign that up for the public comment period at the end. Lastly, if you're not comfortable speaking at the podium, you can fill out a comment form on that same table and those comments are then distributed to council members ahead of our legislative meeting tomorrow night. As always, you can email us or call us outside of this meeting. Our contact information can be found on the city website in addition on the table in the back. With that introduction, we'll get on to our first order of business. There are four items scheduled for public hearing on tonight's agenda. Item number one, a public hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 18.45 of the Code of Ordinances entitled Site Plans and the Zoning Co-Provisions for Multi-Family Housing Design Manual. Mr. Petrie.
Excuse me, Mr. Petrie. I fell out of place there. Before we proceed with the public hearing, I need the city clerk to please call roll. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton?
Here.
Bergy?
Here.
Christopherson?
Here.
Emmanuel?
Here.
Gregert?
Here.
Klinkhammer?
Here.
Lor?
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
My apologies. Again, Mr. Petrie, welcome and good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, President Weld. Before you deny council members and members of the public and members of staff, the Plan Commission has directed city staff, city planning staff, to update the multifamily design standards in front of you. They're also in your packet. Tonight, we'll go over the process which we got to this point. We started this approximately 18 months ago. We'll also go over trends within the core neighborhoods. The core neighborhoods are surrounding the downtown area, infill development, and core neighborhoods throughout the city. Also examples of the proposed changes, which are also in your packet. Talk about the goals of the changes and also moving forward. Process to this point, Plan Commission, which also has a work plan approved by the council, directed staff to provide updated provisions, added provisions for core neighborhoods to the multifamily design manual. This would be for new development within the neighborhoods, also infill development and redevelopment. The neighborhoods, we met with neighborhood associations, citizens, members of the development community, and stakeholders. Along with city staff, we had a couple of discussions with the neighborhood associations and citizens and developers to see the proposed changes. And then also the Plan Commission was in three discussions as well in review of those changes. With that, we provided a guide that is in your packet tonight and the members of the public have it as well of the changes and adding to the existing multifamily design manual. And then staff was the ones that produced the standards on behalf of the Plan Commission. Trends within these established core neighborhoods. Density and scale has been questioned by staff, by developers, by neighbors, and also by Plan Commission members and city council members. We've got to make sure that with new development in the core neighborhoods, established neighborhoods, that it's compatible with the existing surrounding development and within the compatibility of the neighborhood. Most development in these neighborhoods is, they do not have garages typically. Most of the alley is off the, access is off the alley. Design and architecture details potentially has been lacking since 2015. The Plan Commission have reviewed 17 site plans, mostly within the historic Rendell Park neighborhood. Six of them have been denied by the Plan Commission due to many reasons. Five site plans were administratively approved by staff for duplex development. So some examples of existing new development that has occurred in the last 15 years. Here is a duplex on Menominee Street in the historic Rendell Park neighborhood. And here is one off of Phoenix Park Bridge and First Street along historic Rendell Park Some examples of other new development within the neighborhood. Now, this new development was in the past 20 years or so. We classified it as new development. These are four-unit apartments in historic Rendell Park neighborhood as well. The top one's on 10th Avenue and the bottom one's on 9th Avenue. And here are some newer four-unit apartments throughout the neighborhood, again, in Rendell Park neighborhood. Most examples that we have are from the historic Rendell Park neighborhood. You can see the designs have changed over the years. So now we're going to switch gears and go over the details of the guiding principles for the update. Density will be reviewed within fill development and should be complement to the neighborhood. Also, style and appearance should be considered along the public street and alley. We should, compatibility with density and height and scale. And also assuring that it's affordability and sustainability for long-term growth of the neighborhoods. We should build these structures to last up to 100 years like the existing structures have. Also talking about massing in materials and quality within the existing neighborhoods. Going over some more changes within the guidelines that are in front of you tonight. Talking about building design, in particular, talking about the height, massing, scale, should reference the existing neighborhood and the existing blocks of which we're redeveloping. The footprint should be compatible with the existing neighborhood. Exterior materials should be considered. The building entrance should also be considered. Main entrance should have a porch. It should be a covered porch extending out from the facade of the building. And then also, they should not be open to the ground or potentially not open to the ground. Going over some more examples, the roof design should be looked at and reviewed. Gable roofs and hip roofs should be considered. Along with overhangs should be encouraged. Window design is key as well. Talking about vertical and they should be facing the street and sides and rear. And then also gutters could be considered depending on the design. Some more examples of the changes that are in front of you tonight. Talking about landscaping and open space. Encourage a mixture of landscape materials and plantings, variation within the height. Also, different plant materials and screening should be appropriate. Solar consideration, not only for the existing neighborhood, but also the proposed development and future development. Encouraging electrical services shall be upgraded with the new development. And also garages shall be similar or like to the design of the existing or the new proposed development. And then massing of that detached garage shall be minimized. So what are the goals of this? The goals going forward? Plan Commission, this will provide a guide for the Plan Commission, but also for developers and for staff. Every review will be on the same level playing field. And also encourage affordability and sustainability within the new multifamily for the entire neighborhoods and for the city going forward for many years to come. Going forward, the Plan Commission has recommended approval of this on last Monday, December 2nd. Tonight, we're reviewing the public hearing portion and the vote will be tomorrow. Going forward, this would take place for 2020 January. We would notify the neighborhoods, developers, and architects that are in, submit the site plans. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Petrie? Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Petrie. Just a few questions, I guess. One is regarding the neighborhoods that this covers. I see here that it's specifically, this is particularly intended for core neighborhoods. Could you speak to that identifier versus just our entire city?
Absolutely. So the design standards, first paragraph is mentioned surrounding downtown, including but not limited to the East Side Hill neighborhood, the historic Rendell Park neighborhood, Third Ward, North River fronts, North Side Hill, Mount Washington neighborhood, and Upper West Side neighborhood. Now, it would be the direction of the Plan Commission and staff if they want to open this up to every neighborhood in the community. Suburbia in Eau Claire probably does not have alleyway access. So those standards are in the existing multifamily design manual. These standards would be particularly for those core neighborhood, but it could also be branched out on the direction of the Plan Commission and staff going forward.
That's helpful. Thank you. May I ask a follow-up?
Certainly.
Wanted to ask about the amount of green space recommended. Is there a percentage that you usually are looking for as a project comes forward? It doesn't say that in here, but I kind of under the assumption that a lot of developments have a percentage they're aiming for.
Yes, excellent question, Mr. Worthman. It is in the existing zoning ordinance. So this would be a guide that is a part of that zoning ordinance and site plan review. I believe on the top of my head, RM, which is mixed residential, R3 is low density residential, and R4 is high-rise multifamily. They have approximately, I believe it's 35% open space. Don't quote me on that. It's plus or minus. This would be a portion of that would be reviewed with the site plan. And then also the Plan Commission would be the authority to approve that or deny that based on open space.
Thank you. And just one other question. This is regarding the garages. I've always felt, and I'm really happy that these design standards are coming forward. I've always felt that especially it seems like outside of our core neighborhoods, I think the developments often have garage snout fronts. What I call garage snout, which is that you mostly only see the house, the garage is sort of what's forward. And to me, that kind of impacts how the feeling of the neighborhood is. I'm assuming that given that this is mostly for core and mostly where alleys already exist, that that's not as big of a consideration. But, you know, I guess I wanted to just kind of touch on that, that I feel like it's important that in these standards, we're really thinking about the community and neighborhood feel of a development and the way that we design should kind of, I think, take that into consideration.
Absolutely. Under the garages, if there is an alley present, it should be facing the alley. They want to do attached or detached, it would be off the alley. If it was, if no alley was present in the core neighborhoods, I can't think off the top of my head, but there is a way to design it where you do it like behind the house and have like your entry off the side and then you attach it to the back of the house rather than facing the house, or facing the street like you mentioned.
And I see it does ask that front wall be set back a minimum of five feet from the front elevation of the principal building.
That's correct.
Even that helps. So, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Petrie? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I just want to confirm that the document, the three-page document that we have in our packet is the full version of the manual. Is that right?
That is the manual that's being updated. The manual is approximately plus or minus 25 pages. This would be added to that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Council President Weld, and thank you for this presentation. I am kind of curious if you can fill me in if there has been conversation around this. The terms affordability and sustainability are coming up in this and I know they're related to design, but not necessarily often what we think of when we think of design. And there's a lot of specification that you've laid out in terms of the design aspects. Was there a conversation about, for instance, what do the terms affordability and sustainability mean and how do those get taken into consideration?
That's excellent question. We talked about design and sustainability and affordability for long-term of these projects. Some of the examples that were shown on the screen may or may not last 100 years. Those affordable and sustainable for long-term within the core neighborhoods. Some of the projects that we've reviewed in the past, they're ripping down houses that lasted up to 100 years. And now we want to make sure with these new design standards, the Plan Commission and developers and the neighborhoods would prefer them, whatever they're replacing it with, to last up to 100 years. We didn't get into the details exactly of what is affordable and what is sustainable, but we did have the conversation of what it would actually cost to build this. We didn't put that in the guide or into the manual. We're just talking about long-term sustainability of the structures that we're replacing.
May I have a follow-up?
Certainly.
Thank you. That was really helpful. So just to kind of rephrase or get at it, in terms of affordability and sustainability, it's sort of looked at from the perspective of value for the whole community in terms of what investments will be long-term versus what might be affordable for, you know, individuals who might be moving into a neighborhood.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Any other, Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President. I also get done a good job engaging with the neighborhood and developers. I was wondering what are the, was there feedback on it?
Excellent question as well. Most of it was positive information and feedback. Obviously, some of these projects have, neighborhoods have disagreed and developers have disagreed, in particular in the Rendell Park neighborhood. So now this is just leveling the playing field for not only staff to review, but also the Plan Commission and developers. So most of the people who were involved were thankful that we were doing it and also understanding that it's leveling the playing field.
Any other questions? Councilmember Gregert?
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Petrie. I guess this is somewhat of a basic question, but just to clarify, when we're talking about multifamily buildings, are we, what range of buildings are we talking about? Are we talking about from duplexes all the way to the largest apartment buildings or does it, or are duplexes not included with this?
Duplexes are included all the way up to how many units you can do. That's correct.
Great. So, I guess some of them are administratively approved, like duplexes, that others go in front of Plan Commission, right?
That is correct. Now, if a developer proposed a duplex that didn't come even close to these standards, we would run that through the Plan Commission and get their judgment on it and see if they would approve that duplex that was proposed.
Any other questions for Mr. Petrie? I don't see any. Thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Again, I'll ask if there's anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item. Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number two, a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning a property located on the north side of Seymour Road, east of Andover Avenue from TR 1A and R1 to R1P and to approve the general development plan with a reduced front yard setback. Good evening, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Council President Weld and members of the council. Out west of the bypass, north of the Eau Claire River, again, north of Seymour Road, east of Andover Avenue more specifically. Here are the parcels in question, primarily looking at the parcels immediately to, on the north end where you see the TR 1A designation and then bringing the whole thing in under one single R1P designation of about 21 acres in size. There are four vacant lots. You can see this more clearly here on this aerial map. Again, to the west there, you see Andover Avenue, to the south, you see Seymour Road. Water and Santerre Sewer are available along Andover Road. It's not shown on the aerial here, but that is access for the project as a whole. With that, here's the notification area. Staff did receive at least one comment or question from a property owner owns property. On what you see there is shown as Barbara Jean Drive to the northwest. As you'll see here, that is an undeveloped area and street. And the questioning was primarily related to access to utilities for this proposed project. So again, more of question and comment than anything particularly in favor or against the proposal. The general development plan, which also again serves as a preliminary plat, which is reviewed by the Plan Commission, consists of 20 single-family residential lots. This is a subdivision that the applicant is proposing to name Woodland Hills Estates. The kind of key designation, so the planned development part of this with the general development plan, the applicant is requesting to reduce front yard setbacks from the required 30 feet to 20 feet. You can see that more specifically here, the purpose and rationale for that. Reduction is requested due to severity and proximity of steep slopes. Throughout the project, you can see some of the environmentally sensitive areas is identified here in the shaded portions. You can see how that would encroach on proposed kind of house pads along the proposed Craven Court extension. As noted, Craven Court is a proposed renaming of Dedham Street, which you can see more clearly here, the northwest corner, which does kind of terminate at the north end of Andover Avenue. So again, with that here, you can see that would extend as a single cul-de-sac within the proposal. There's also the extension, apologies for jumping back and forth here, of Essex Street. And again, that would be an extension with a two-lot kind of bulb, cul-de-sac there at the bottom of the screen. In the packet, also information regarding engineering is related to the general development plan. And with that, again, I don't believe, applicant is here. Thank you. Applicant is here, perhaps could respond to any specific questions the council may have. Other than that, this was before the Plan Commission at their meeting last week and they have recommended approval before you this evening, along with staff recommending the same. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there any questions from council? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President. I'll keep my microphone on this time. Let's turn my shit off. But I have a few questions.
All right.
I know you touched on it, but I just want to clarify, when this first came before us, there were a few people that came to speak about it. I don't remember that. It was a long time ago.
Correct.
But I just wonder if you've heard from them. I haven't heard from them at all, but have you heard from them or city staff heard from them? Because they had some concerns about runoff and things like that, so.
Sure. No, great question. Thank you. Yes, the applicant did go through annexation of those northern two parcels recently, as well as two separate rezonings prior to this. And yes, there were some comments related to that. I did not hear any specific comments or questions or concerns at this time beyond just actually to the northwest there. Again, questions about utility access and things of that sort.
Certainly.
Okay. And then if you could put up your map again? That's a really pretty picture, but.
We lost it.
Oh.
Here we go. All right.
Yeah. I'm charging my iPads I don't have in front of me. So I was just wondering, I was having a hard time even in the packet, understanding, can you point this out onto the other, like an over, I don't understand where that goes, where the, where is the road? Because that's the new road, right?
Thank you. Can I steal your mouse, perhaps? We have, thank you. So the new road, the current road is Dedham Street.
Okay.
Ends approximately in this area, kind of trails off. You can see, I think they tried to show some of the existing drive to existing residents. So again, it's extending that. So to the east, again, north is to the left because of the layout here. Again, extending eastward and then south, kind of at the top of the, let's say ridge or bluff here, and then future extension for future phases beyond that. So this is what is being proposed to be constructed. And then there's a cul-de-sac bulb here for Essex Street.
Okay. Ask one more?
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you. So the road up then, that will be pretty steep, I'm guessing? Because that's on top of the ridge?
That's a good point. In terms of the recommendations, requirements actually through the engineering department, that there may be some steep, exactly some steep grades. The street is required to be less than 10%. But again, that may be allowed based on topography to exceed that. I may defer to the applicant, if I may, in terms of their intentions in certain areas. Perhaps not the entire street, but portions of it may have some steeper grades.
Okay. Thanks.
Was that it? I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, that's good.
Any other questions?
No.
Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, President Weld. Mr. Allen, the orientation of this can be confusing, I think, for folks too, obviously, because essentially north is on the left for folks looking at it. But I know one point of discussion when we've had various parts of this overall proposal in front of us over the last year has been the power lines that go north and south, just east of the properties that are currently on Andover Avenue. So it essentially looks like lots nine through 19 are going to have a power line going through them? Or am I looking at that incorrectly? And if so, like how exactly is that addressed with regard to the building of housing and such?
Sure. If I may, I may defer to the applicant more specifically to the kind of housing location other than where you see the labeling. For example, lots 14 through 19, those are essentially the proposed locations for housing there. So in that area, and then also lots 11 and 16, which is that Essex Street bulb, kind of between, in that shaded area roughly is where you would see some of the power lines. But again, again, I may defer to the applicant or will defer to that, thank you, in terms of more specifically where that would be located. I could jump back to this. Yeah, it doesn't really show here either. So if I may, I may defer to the applicant to explain more in terms of how that may impact both the both the kind of existing stand of trees and kind of the steep slopes as well as proposed building locations. But I know, again, that's the request here is to reduce that front yard setback so the houses could be set closer to that Craven Court as well as Essex Street. So they're requesting that deviation for all of the lots and not just those on Craven Court as well. That may not answer your question, I apologize, but it would defer to that applicant to maybe better respond to that.
Any other questions for Mr. Allen? I don't see any.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Did the applicant want to come up? Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for considering our proposal this evening. My name is Andrew Holland with JE Development Group, the company that's proposing this. This is our first foray into land development, so it's pretty exciting for us. I want to address, hopefully everybody got the configuration figured out on that original one from the city. It was just twisted so north was up there and south was up there. So as Mr. Allen said, you're just coming from the north side of the development. As it relates to the road grade, at this time, and my engineer can speak, Mark can speak more to this, we don't anticipate having any grades greater than 10% at this time, should that change as we go through the road costs and what have you. We would certainly work with Engineering Department, but that's not anticipated right now. As it relates to the power lines, so the high lines are kind of to the, are way behind where the houses would be built. Basically, there are 35-foot easement on both sides of the power lines that are cleared, and that's kind of on the slope part of those, that would be the western lots, lot 19, 18, 17, 16. So they won't have any impact in, as it relates to where the houses will sit. They'll sit atop the hill, and then there are going to be mostly walkouts on that side. So then the grade drops off, and then that's where the power lines are. If there are any other questions that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Can you show us where in that picture the power lines go through?
Sure. Thank you. Perfect. So right here, this is Essex Street, which is down the hill, and then these are the two lots that are a part of the development. The power lines basically go all the way through here.
Okay.
And the houses would be built.
Up on the hill.
Up here. And if this was a topographical map, you'd see the drop off in the backyards.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Let's see, thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Again, I'll ask, does anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number three, which is a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning a property located at the west end of Lurch Avenue, south of Interstate 94, from TR-1A to C-3P and R-3P, and to adopt the general development plan for commercial development and multifamily development for apartment buildings. This item was postponed from the October 22, 2019 council meeting. Again, good evening, Mr. Allen.
Good evening again, Council President Weld and members of the council. Again, showing here too, apologies, ignore the numbering here. This is the flaw of flipping things around from Plan Commission meeting to City Council meeting and such, so bear with me with some of the numbering here, apologies for that. But just again, showing the approximate location in a general vicinity map of this proposed project located at the western terminus of Lurch Avenue, immediately south of Interstate 94, and of course, west of Highway 93 and north of Lowes Creek and the county park as well. More specifically, here's aerial photo showing the parcels and area in question. You can see immediately to the east is Florian Gardens, and again, proposed extension of Lurch Avenue here as well. Here's again, a different vicinity map showing the zoning in a current state. Again, the proposed rezoning is to changes from TR-1A, again, very similar to the previous project, in this case, changing that to C-3P, the north portion, and R-3P on the south. The total area of the proposed rezoning would be approximately 42 acres. Showing the general notification map, there was a comment from the property owner to the west, made some comments at the Plan Commission meeting last week. I've not heard from other neighboring adjacent property owners at this time. There's also a certified survey map as a part of this request. This is, again, would be moving forward as well because there is a dedication of future right-of-way related to Lurch Avenue. It is a four lot CSM. There are three commercial lots on the north side, lot one, lot two, and lot three, as noted there. They are two acres, 3.35 acres, and 4.63 acres. The one residential lot you see on the south would be approximately 30 acres. I'll get into a little more details of that here in a moment. Here's the future land use map or planned land use map for this area. Again, a little bit hard to see. I may challenge Ms. Merle to see if she can find where that is with her mouse. So we can all point to it, it's the brown and north of the green, close, closer. There you go, thank you. That's the general area, thank you for that. So there is a transitioning from kind of a mix of commercial and medium and high-density housing. So the proposed project or rezoning, I should say, with the revised general development plan does appear to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, planned land use map as you see here. Again, overall with the project itself, probably parking this map just for a little bit, the, again, general development plan attached with the rezoning here does indicate that businesses would be located on those lots one, two, and three, and they would range in size from 2,000 to 16,000 square feet, offering kind of a mix of retail sales and service, office, personal services, institutional vehicle services. The proposed residential lot on the south that you see there, I think it's identified there as well in some of the labeling, would be approximately 13.77 acres of a developable area, which would preserve approximately 16.37 acres as passive and some active open space as well along Lowes Creek. The revised residential development is proposed as four three-story buildings. I'll jump ahead to that drawing here. With a range of 40 to 65 units per building, the units would consist of Studio One and two bedrooms, along with some that would have direct entry. I know there's, again, frequently some questions on kind of the range of the proposed rents and market for this type of project. The applicant does state that the first phase, which are Buildings One, Two, that's in the middle there, again, bookended by future phases, Building Three, thank you, on the right kind of southeast, and then Building Four on the left or the west. So Buildings One and Two in the middle would be aimed toward market rate renters. Second phase may consider workforce housing based on future building analysis and demand. And again, as part of rezoning, really need to be focusing on compliance with the planned land use. But again, with the general development plan, looking at more of the layout, density, access, traffic, those types of components. Certainly some interest in the, you know, kind of the renting aspects of this in terms of costs and market. But again, I'll defer to the applicant to kind of share more of the details of that. But in terms of deliberation and consideration here, really focusing on with the rezoning, the planned land use map, which appears to be in compliance, and then again, all the specific details, more of the site relation with the general development plan. So with that, again, this is a transition area from mixture of commercial to medium and high-density residential. Staff has indicated to the applicant in previous discussions and communications that really need to focus on a variety of housing types, densities, and building configurations. Again, this is the proposed primary type of structure. The applicant has indicated, you know, future phasing may relate to some different scale and types of housing. And again, but as it stands, they are proposing four three-story buildings, and they do range from 40 units from some of the smaller items and, or buildings, I should say, including that future building three to the southeast, but up to 65 units, which are the first two buildings under consideration. So with that, again, the Plan Commission did make a consideration of this request. They have recommended approval before you this evening. The P designation, I should note as well, may not have been abundantly clear in the staff report or attachments. The applicant has noted that they may exceed some of the height standards for the R3 zoning, base zoning, and that's the reason for requesting the P designation. Again, I'll defer to them if they have any additional considerations, but they're not at this point intending to exceed the density of the R3 zoning nor setbacks or other deviations from the basic standards of R3 zoning district, primarily looking at perhaps height standards may exceed some of those with some of these buildings. So that's the purpose and rationale for the P designation with planned development part of the general development plan related to the rezoning request before you, this evening. And with that, I'll take a breath and see if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Allen, I wanted to come back to that affordability issue. So I'm looking here at the criteria in our packet regarding the general development plan. And affordability is not really anywhere in those 10 different criteria, as I can understand it.
Correct.
I see sustainability, I see availability, conformance with comprehensive plan. I don't see anything about affordability of housing.
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, if I may, I made note of that simply because, again, there's a strong interest, again admittedly, through a lot of conversations with new housing, especially when we start looking at multifamily housing coming forward, and there have been some comments, again, from the public and from Plan Commission as well, related to that. So just acknowledging that as a discussion point, but certainly not as Councilmember Worthman noted as a, one of the criteria for voting on a rezoning particularly.
Any other questions? Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. And thank you, Councilmember Worthman, for lifting up that question and for Mr. Allen for that clarification on that. Ultimately, any agreement coming before council, a plan or general development agreement would have that council discretion. When you indicate that staff has had many conversations with the applicant, to what extent do you sense there might be a willingness or even a public commitment to say that, if there is any, to affordability for a certain number of units within this plan?
That's not anything that we've gotten into in great detail on. Again, the first two buildings applicant is, seems to indicate that they're strictly focusing on market rate at this point. Again, a lot of the components that we're attempting to review and consider through this current review and through what is before you tonight, as Councilmember Worthman noted as well, the review criteria, those 10 items when you're looking at a general development plan, including, you know, compatibility with adjacent properties, basic utilization of site planning principles, mitigating any impacts on the surrounding environment, traffic, access, density, things of that sort. So a number of other components come into play with this type of development. For example, as noted, we've indicated to the applicant that it would be preferable to see these buildings transition in from a higher density perhaps on the east end to something of a lower density, eight units, four units, twin homes and such, transitioning to more of the natural environment as it backs up to and gets closer to the Lowes Creek Park. So those are the types of things that we've been emphasizing. The actual rent structure, again, more of a informational item at this point, and obviously something in terms of consideration, you know, for their future phases as they are looking at, you know, mixing these types of buildings moving forward. But again, I'll defer to the applicant in terms of how they look at building this type of development. If it's something that they're replicating from another community, perhaps they're, were able to identify some, you know, mixed, you know, mixed income rent structure, that, those types of questions didn't get, we didn't get to that level of detail at this point, but that's certainly something that may be of interest as they, in relation to their other similar developments perhaps.
Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I did again, keep it on. I have, thanks, Mr. Allen. I have three questions. That's okay. First one is just, will there be two votes tomorrow, one on zoning and one on the general development plan? Or is it, do we approve both things in one vote?
The latter. They're approved together.
Okay.
Yes. The P designation with the R-3P is what brings in the general development plan attached to that.
Okay. Makes sense. Another question?
Certainly.
You had mentioned that you heard something from an adjacent property owner. I was wondering what they said.
To the west, again, I, without looking behind me, I don't know if the, that property owner is present tonight. Again, just in terms of a future connection and compatibility, they had some questions with that.
Okay, so concerns?
I don't recall anything of large or great detail, more just of general, general concerns with the development as a whole.
Okay, thanks. Then finally, this is maybe a bigger question, but with traffic, and you keep bringing up traffic as a criteria, and I happened to be over in that area last week, and traffic was backed up in a random time, was backed up a lot. I don't know what was going on, just like 1:00 on a Thursday or something. So, and that's before, if we get a hundred more commercial and a lot for apartment buildings. So would you ever change the road? Or what if it does become really backed up back there? What are some options? I guess I have a concern about that. So I don't know if you could address that?
Traffic impact analysis will be acquired as we move forward with this final site plan.
Okay.
Related to this. Again, I might defer to the applicant to see where they are with that process. That is one of the recommendations or conditions of approval that are recommended by the Engineering Department, is to have that traffic impact analysis finalized and to provide a certain level of service as related to that. So there may be some traffic improvements that would need to occur on Lurch Avenue based on what those findings are. I don't, I hesitate to guess what those might be at this point.
Just one more question?
Shall we just check and see if there's any other questions first? Is there any other questions from council? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I just wanted to continue this conversation about affordability. I know, you know, that there's, this is still preliminary, so I appreciate that context, and there's a lot about this project that seems really exciting. I love it when people are able to have businesses and places to live, like close in walking distance, and the proximity to the park is, could be really cool. But I am really concerned about affordability on this project, and I'm wondering in terms of process, you know, when, if this is, if this is the time when we're thinking primarily about zoning, you know, when is the time to intervene in terms of thinking about how do we incentivize this affordable housing? Or what is the process where City Council can, you know, really show a commitment to that?
That is maybe a question bigger than this rezoning request. Certainly appreciate that question. It's something that I think we're grappling with as a whole, obviously as city and the community, but also city staff. In terms of rezoning, that's something that, I guess, to get on the technical weeds, I may lean on. may lean on Ms. Stromberger here as well, because, again, rezoning, there are certain things that we're not at liberty to really require as a part of rezoning. Affordability, unfortunately, for better or worse, is not one of those. Again, that's why the criteria, we tried to lay those out here very, very clearly, that these are the things that need to be considered when we talk about rezoning. But in terms of affordability, that'd be something we need to have a discussion about, and we have up to this point in terms of, you know, affordable housing fund through the capital improvement plan, the Andy Lane project, things of that sort. So not to, again, there's some overlap, but again, I like to say they're a bit mutually exclusive because there's separate types of approaches. And rezoning, as it stands, is not one of those approaches.
Thank you. May I have a follow-up?
Certainly.
Thank you so much for being willing to think through this big picture question with me on this for the moment. I really, I really appreciate that.
Sure.
You know, I think it's just a matter of, you know, just a rhetorical question really is, you know, when I have a message here from a constituent on our desk that is saying, you know, affordable housing is urgent and we need to not be thinking about a major development that doesn't include that, it's always a challenge to know, how do I respond to a constituent in that?
Sure.
So I appreciate your talking through.
Sure. No, absolutely. And it's one of those things where, when we see these projects coming forward as a whole, and again, speaking more in a philosophical manner, that it's, it'd be great if we could speak to all of the individual issues and concerns before us with a development. Rezoning, again, for better or worse, is, is not a multi-purpose tool.
Mm-hmm.
It's one aspect of the tools that we have in terms of managing where development goes and what it looks like. And affordability is not one of those parts of that multi-purpose tool that we have, at least not at this point, at least not in the state.
Right.
At this point, so.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess, I think you already covered this, but I kind of, so I'm looking at an aerial map here at the area and, and it, the area seems pretty like industrial, maybe not industrial, but there's some larger businesses, not really much housing, not much residential in the area. And so I guess I just want to kind of hear from you a little bit more about kind of the, how appropriate residential is for this area and if that's something that was discussed at Plan Commission.
No, great question. I think that points very clearly to then the planned land use map. Again, not being a part of that back in 2015, but there was some expectation, as you can see there, of at least having a transition down from this exactly a little bit more dense, kind of higher, you know, larger scale commercial, transitioning westward into that medium and high-density housing, and then further transitioning as it gets up in, you know, backing up directly to Lowes Creek to some of the more low-density housing. Hence, that's where staff has been recommending that transition from the larger-scale buildings westward to some smaller-scale buildings, you know, as this project is phased in. But yes, there was expectation for this housing type in this area with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Allen? Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you. As a follow-up from with the traffic and if there is deemed that there needs to be changes to the traffic pattern or roads, who pays for that? Would the developer pay for that or does the city pay for that?
The developer typically would pay for those improvements. Again, if it's, if it's shown that their, their project would make those impacts necessary.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Allen, is there a plan to extend Lorch Ave. all the way through to Lowes Creek Road? Is that, is that somewhere in our plans that that would happen?
Great question. That's not specifically identified, any kind of future street networks or plans. I believe that may be some of the conversation. Again, I don't want to speak out of turn from the property owner to the west, but again, where and how that future extension, if any, may happen. Again, that's not been identified, as you can see here, just showing this for reference, that has not been identified on the certified survey map that's proposed. I can jump ahead here, too. You can see future Lorch Avenue shown there. Where that goes is, I guess, a mystery at this point, but there's no, there are no city plans to show that connecting up or, you know, crossing Interstate 94 or anything like that at this point.
Okay. If I could ask a follow-up, too. How many people are we thinking are going to be in the future development buildings? And I assume that lots one, two, and three are, or all of those lots on the north side are going to be redeveloped as well? Am I understanding this right?
Lots one, two, and three are proposed as the commercial.
Oh, okay.
Yes. And so what you see there is...
Only be residential on the south side?
Correct. Yeah. So what you see is the residential is the current, proposed, current, and future extent of the residential.
How many, how many residents do we think will be living in this, when it's, when all phases are complete?
Sure. The applicant has noted that the proposed density would be a maximum of 228 units.
Okay.
The first phase would be 130, so two 65-unit buildings, and then another 40 and 58. The density is just over 16 and a half units per acre. The maximum density in R3 is 21, so they are, they are below that. Their original proposal, which was postponed back in October, showed a much higher density, and they've since revised that to what you see here.
Just so I'm clear, is 200 and, say, 230?
Twenty-eight.
228? That, that's units, but that's not resident, that's not people living there?
Correct.
That's the number of units?
Units, yes.
Which is, and so it could be, how many, how many, are we talking 500 people living there or?
I may defer to the applicant on that. They are proposing a mix of Studio One and two bedrooms.
Okay.
So they've not suggested anything larger than two-bedroom units.
Okay.
So again, that being the case, certainly could be 400, 500.
Somewhere that range.
Presumably. I don't have the, a rough estimate beyond that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Allen? Councilmember McGregor.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. Mr. Allen, thank you for answering all these questions. I got one more for you, I think.
Sure.
So, and obviously, there's been some discussion about traffic and there'll be a study to focus on that. And I do recall that the, the property owner to the west, it seemed like their primary concern was traffic.
Yeah. To be specific.
Future proposed traffic. Yeah. So, you know, some of the things that I'm, I'm seeing here are upgrading Lorch Avenue to, to a more complete street, I guess you could say, where right now there's not curb and gutter, there's not, there's no sidewalk or trail or really a shoulder on the road. So my understanding is that this proposal, at least for the, the area to be developed, would have a multi-use path on the south side of the road and a sidewalk on the north side of the road and curb and gutter. Is that correct?
It seems to be, that's the drawing here. Again, without knowing all current and proposed extensions of that, I may defer to the applicant to see what their understanding of that is. But yes, as shown here, you do see trail and sidewalk. Again, they also have internal trails. As you see there, the green lines scattered throughout, but along Lorch, certainly the expectation is to upgrade that segment of, of the road there to accommodate that. Beyond that, I'm not sure what the engineering department has in terms of, you know, capital improvement plans or projects east of here. So not sure exactly when and how that may connect into things in the future. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Allen? Councilmember Worthman.
So I'm just reading this letter that we have here. And it, it sort of comes back to what Councilmember Beaton had, had brought up as well, but, you know, just pointing out that many of the jobs that are in that area are, you know, medium to lower-wage jobs, including hospitality, retail, senior care industries, people who are not making the kind of money that probably will, will be able to afford the development that we're seeing on our desk tomorrow. And I guess, you know, when I look at this, I think this is a, this is a huge development. We're talking about, you know, potentially 400 to 500 people, 230 units. At the end of Lorch Ave., right now, what is the end of Lorch Ave., you know, past an industrial area? I, I just, I can't help but think it, it feels a little bit like an island of, of a development. And I'm thinking about just if someone's going to live there, they're probably, you know, they don't have the connectedness to a greater neighborhood or, or anything that, that I think I would want to see. And that's part of why I'm, my question to you is, is maybe once the road is extended, it will have a different feeling to it, or maybe once there are more businesses that are going in in the other part of this development. But right now, it doesn't, it feels a little bit like an island of, of a development in the, in the way that it's positioned in our community. Does that, does that make any sense?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I can certainly speak to that only in that, let me jump ahead here again. Exactly showing here, it's, it's not detailed at this point in terms of general development plan status, so we're not really seeing exactly what the commercial components may be for lots one, two, and three. As you noted, there may, there may be some synergy, for lack of a better term, with some of the residences there in terms of employment opportunities. Certainly access to Interstate 94, and again, I don't want to speak out of turn and defer to the developer on some of this in terms of their marketing and their market analysis, but obviously, access to Interstate 94 opens up a different kind of residential mix in this area, too. Again, it's simply not just, you know, access to immediate local employment areas, but also, again, that larger regional network through the, the larger infrastructure, sorry, larger highway infrastructure immediately available here.
Yeah. I think, I think this conversation is probably similar to the one we had when we extended on Business 53, the development there at the time, which was very controversial about whether or not to extend that.
And certainly with Lowes Creek and the park there, and, you know, even though there's access to Interstate 94, it's a limited access thoroughfare. So exactly as you move westward, it starts to narrow down and, and become a little bit more of that kind of dead-end location there, certainly. But again, pointing back to, pointing back to the planned land use, that again, looking at this as an opportunity for nestling in some of that transition from commercial down to...
Residential.
Yeah, residential there, in part because it is located near that kind of a, I'd say kind of cul-de-sac kind of development, but with lack of other connectivity in the area, you know, limited opportunities for, for much more than what's considered here tonight.
Thank you.
Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. In the packet, it reminds us that the applicant withdrew or asked for a postponement for this consideration. Can you speak a little bit about that? My memory is fuzzy on what that was about and can you share what that was about?
Sure. No, sorry. Very, yeah, very good point. I could have spoken a little bit more detail to that. The applicant came forward with much less detail than what you see here tonight. They provided some of that additional detail, I'd say kind of cold, but before the Plan Commission at their, that October meeting. So without an opportunity for staff or Plan Commission review prior to that evening's meeting, and then furthermore, then no opportunity for members of the public really to review that either. And so with that, it's agreed to continue, postpone the item so that there'd be more of an opportunity to reconsider what was being presented at that very night and then refine that further to what you see here tonight. And for, for one, I could note, too, they originally had suggested a much higher density that would exceed that 21 units per acre that was allowed kind of by right, and we're asking for the Plan Commission to consider a larger density, and they've since scaled that back to what you see here tonight.
Any other questions? I haven't seen any.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Good evening.
Good evening, Council. I am Mark Erickson with Everyday Survey and Engineering. I'm here on behalf of HK Development Group. Awesome questions, folks. I, I'm going to try to kind of go zoning first and then work a little bit on the engineering street side of it, okay? As Mr. Allen alluded so eloquently, we do meet the 10 zoning, rezoning requirements. The reason of going to the highway commercial, or that's a bad word, C3P on the northern side is, if you folks are familiar with this area, 93 starts to make, 94 makes a little bit of an incline there. The land is nice and low around that Action City area, Florian Gardens, and there's some beautiful exposure for those types of businesses that need that kind of interstate exposure or what have you to make that turn off to get to it. You know, density-wise, yes, we are much less than what the 21 is, 16 and some change or what have you. We are reserving 16-plus acres of green space, open space. Likewise, we're only utilizing about 13.7 of that. In a topographic manner, related to zoning and, and what we're doing with the land is not much beyond the buildings on the south side. The land does seem to fall off and it does ultimately go to Lowes Creek, and that's where we're proposing some tenant-use trails within the whole system there, some stormwater ponds, some park benches and stuff like that for use of the passive open space. I guess I'll stop and see if anyone has any rezoning questions or anything related to that.
Any questions regarding zoning for the applicant? I think we're good so far.
This is too easy. Okay, I'll go back into the engineering spots of it now, and like Councilmember Gregor said, is yes, we are proposing, per the advisory of the city engineering department, a multi-use bike path on the south side of the road and then a regular traditional five-foot concrete sidewalk on the north side of the road. The street will be of width with curb and gutter that the city has desired and allowed us to have the insight on doing it, which they would extend sometime, like Mr. Allen had mentioned, a CIP project from the terminus of our project all the way out back towards the 93 intersection. As far as the intersection itself goes in the TIA, Buildings One and Two will be brought on upon approval, be brought on probably next year. Their completion will probably be in 2021. So the impacts of traffic immediately is going to be a little bit, it's going to be a little bit postponed until those are fulfilled. We will, with engineering staff of the city and our TIA consultant, look and analyze what we need to do for improvements on the 93, like Mrs. Bergy said here. It is tight. It is a tight interchange right now as it sits right now. It next down has a funny corner there. There's definitely rooms for improvement and how that can be better with the amount of volume of traffic. Hopefully, this whole area will see a, in a commercial expansion and a nice residential expansion of the city of Eau Claire.
Any questions? Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you. In, in your list of amenities that will be part of the project, you list environmentally conscious. Can you speak about what that means specifically?
I wish I could, but the developer, Mr. Gunnerhagen is here with HK. He's the H in the HK Development. He can go a little bit more about the building intimate, internal stuff.
Okay. Great. I wasn't sure if he was here, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember McGregor.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. I guess to go back to that zoning question you had, and we didn't have any questions for you, and now I'd like to ask one. And it's sort of building off of what Councilmember Worthman said with regard to it being somewhat of an island of zoning or of land. of an island of zoning or of land use, and like from, it seems to me that maybe that's part of the point, is that you want to kind of utilize the Lowes Creek, you know, the views of the Lowes Creek area and that proximity as, as kind of an isolated attractive space for housing. Would you say that was what you're going for? I think that's kind of what I gathered from the packet.
Yes, very good question, Mr. Gregor. I almost want to wait till he gets back, but yes, this, the reason there's no expansion, let's call it, to the south of those buildings, once again, is the topography does fall off, it will produce some pretty darn wonderful views, to be honest with you, as well as keep it open for passive space for those people there. That's why the road does kind of kick up and curve. And yes, it does look like an island today. Things that look like islands today don't usually be in islands later. Westridge Village, I grew up in one that was the border of Tonnaseamore, and next thing you know, it exploded around it, you know? So it does happen, it does happen sometimes overnight, sometimes it takes a little while to get there. So, good question. It does appear to be an island as right now, the exclusiveness of it being an island, well, there's going to be some growth through the west eventually, to what timeframe and what stature of that growth. I think that gentleman is here tonight that is to the west of our property, but that is... I couldn't pause anymore, sir, I was going to wait to answer your question about the island effect. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, it does have the appearance of being, oh, gosh, we've got a long strip of public land, whether it's the county park there. Immediately adjacent to the southeast of this, south of Lorch right there is actually a city stormwater facility, so it does have a little bit of a country feel to it. And, you know, there's some pretty fine established businesses along this corridor that is now going to be at the end of this end cap here, right now, today's dead end would be residential community, yeah.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Go ahead.
I apologize, I got two more geeky engineering things to talk to you about here.
Sure.
I don't want to belabor it, but the conversation about an extension to Lois Creek Road, will Lorch ever go through? I don't want to ever use the word never. Probability is probably pretty slim, topographically speaking, and the properties that are immediately west of Lois Creek as it goes under I-94 for that matter. It would be a potential significant cost to get that road crossing through. So as a whole, and not speaking for the city's behalf, this is potentially a permanent dead end. Another engineering aspect of this thing that makes it unique to its own right is, topographically speaking, again, the reason we're proposing Buildings 1 and 2 as they sit kind of like that is those buildings and facilities are the only two on the south side of the road that today could be serviced with gravity sewer. The rest of the stuff, even further west, Building 2 and/or south, or Building 4 is, would need some type of a lift station, a pumping station to bring it up to a gravity feed system to get it to go the right way.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Thanks for coming up. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gunnerhagen, I am part of HK Development. And to, just to kind of highlight some of your questions about affordability, the reason we're going for kind of market rents on the first couple of stages is due to the fact that we feel that there is still demand for the south side for the more luxury apartments. I currently rent to 100, I currently have about 100 units in town, and I have a waiting list, and I'm not, I'm at market currently. And with the amenities we're going to provide out there, we feel it's going to be a little above what the affordable housing rate would be, you know, with the swimming pool, you know, bike trails connecting to the county park ski trail, you know, dog washes, just all the amenities that no other place in Eau Claire can offer at the moment. So just with those amenities comes a little higher price tag. As far as density, you know, they're going to be studio one bedrooms and two bedrooms, and currently, my renters who rent two bedrooms, sometimes there's only one person in it, so you can't really go by, you know, direct number of units, you know, because I do rent to older people who are snowbirds, they might only be there six, seven months a year, otherwise they're gone. So just the density, yeah, we're going to increase it, however, everybody's not going to be leaving at the same time like when Florian lets out. That's probably the traffic impact somebody saw on the other day. Then as far as, you know, my current tenants, you know, like to have that quietness, not the, I guess, hustle and bustle of being down here and River Prairie. They like to come home, be quiet, and, you know, not hear all the traffic. So that's why we chose this area for development, is, you know, it can overlook Lowes Creek with great views, it's kind of country living close to town, or within the city limits. And then I believe you had a question about environmentally friendly, or what was the...
Yeah, if I could clarify. Your list of amenities lists like sustainability conscious, so could you speak to that, what that means specifically?
What we're looking at for our buildings is possibly integrating solar to cut on common costs for like heating the hallways, the pool, just to bring those costs down. So we'll be talking with Excel. I've already spoken with Focus to see if there's any cost sharing or any incentives they could provide for us.
Any questions? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for presenting this evening. Wanted to follow up on what you see for the future developments and potentially integrating affordability into the future stages of this?
Well, right now, like as we stated before, our initial Phase 1 is targeting the market rents. And if in the future, it does, if we feel that that is saturated, then we will start to look at building a little differently to market that affordable scale. And, you know, we just figure, right now, within the next couple of years, there's going to be so much affordable housing coming on market with the 300 and some out at Westridge Village, the 80 unit going out at River Prairie, and then the city's also looking at the, oh, the Bus Depot, having affordable there, and then the Cannery District. There's just, there's so many affordable housings on the table right now that we're just, we're feeling there is a little need in Eau Claire for a little luxury apartment. And I wouldn't say luxury, just, you know, market rents.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beaton.
Catherine can go.
Council Vice President.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I have a question for you in regards to perhaps conversations you've had with existing neighbors, whether it's Florian, or with Metropolis, or even with the county and the properties that they have there, and the county park that they manage that's close in that vicinity. Can you share with me if you've had conversations with them and feedback that they've given you?
I've talked in with the Florian, met with them, and they're excited. Metropolis have also spoken with them, they're excited as well, you know, because all of this brings more traffic past their business. And as far as, you know, Ken Vance Motors, you know, that'll be more traffic coming by their business as well. As far as the county, I really haven't spoken with the county since this is a city project.
Sure.
I haven't spoken to them.
I see. Thank you.
Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you. I guess I just wanted to help us build off of your comments about affordability. You know, I think that this council has been looking at housing affordability really seriously in the last couple of years, and it's been in response to a statistic that says 42% of our community is living paycheck to paycheck, folks who are struggling to pay their rent. And I think that we have studies that show that the city of Eau Claire has limited housing across income spectrum, and that there's a need for, you know, market rate housing and affordable housing. But when we have people who are living on the streets or living in housing that's insufficient to their needs, I think that this council and this community is seeing, you know, affordable housing as the most urgent issue in our community. And in an area where there's like low-paying jobs and minimum wage paying jobs, I think that an affordable housing component should be, you know, considered again for this project, that it absolutely is a need for this, and I think that it, you know, affordable housing would fit well into that neighborhood. And I think that, I guess I wanted to say that as a value that has been set by this council, by way of our community input, and so I wanted to ask if that's still something that's on the table for you, or if this is a project that is going to be moving forward without that.
As far as Phase 1, we're looking at market moving forward. Like I've said before, if it deems that the market rate is saturated, then we will look at, you know, because we're not going to, we're not going to let this land sit vacant. We're going to put something on it. If we have to downscale or make it affordable, that's what we'll have to end up doing. But in Phase 1, we are looking at market rates. And then as far as, you know, some of, some of the current buildings that are out there that are, you know, kind of market rents, or just above, or just below market rates, those tenants may move to the market rate at this place and then open up that affordable. Because currently, mine right now, I thought were market, but according to some of the numbers I got from the city, I'm below, I'm below what workforce housing is. Because I think a one bedroom right now is 1,100, I'm getting two bedrooms at 975. So I'm already below, and I figure mine are luxury. I mean, I'm the only person in town with an indoor pool and hot tub, I have underground parking. So I thought my current stuff was kind of luxury, but by looking at those numbers, I guess I'm below workforce. So I guess what I was saying is, there might be a transition that opens up some of the current housing to, for the people that go into the market stuff.
Any other questions? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Council President Weld, and thank you so much for coming in. I appreciate the, I live near there, and so I appreciate the kind of creativity for how to use this space in a new way, and I'm wondering if we could speak a little bit creatively? I just wanted to elevate a question that a constituent who couldn't come had emailed, which is thinking about, you know, if this idea of affordable housing, you know, just doesn't fit into like your vision for this, if there would be some sort of alternative, like a community benefits agreement or something like that, if that would be on the table or part of a conversation?
I guess, once we get to that, we can always, we can always look at it. So nothing is ever off the table, but right now, we're just kind of in the concept phase of getting it rezoned. That might be something to talk to at a later time. And then as far as affordable, you know, granted, this, this is kind of a destination housing, it's not on any bus route, so you will need a vehicle. So to address affordable housing, you know, typically, affordable housing should be on a bus line, because that, most people would rather take public transportation than have their own vehicle. So I guess in that aspect, the area doesn't afford to affordable housing, because it is kind of a destination until we get bus service down there. Then, I mean, it would be, it would be great, because I think Metropolis would benefit, you know, have bringing more people out to them, I mean, they entertain kids, so the kids can't drive, so that'll help them get there.
Yeah.
We would definitely like that.
Thank you, and I do appreciate that. The point about bus service is one of the first things that kind of came to my mind, is that it's a little, it's a little far out, so thanks for that.
And any other questions? Councilmember Gregor.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. Mr. Hagan, the studio and one-bedroom apartments, do you have an estimate as to how much those will rent for?
Well, as far as the numbers provided me from the city, workforce is right around 1,000 for a studio and 1,100 for a one-bedroom. So we probably won't be much higher than that, if not right at those numbers. Once we get our building numbers in, then we can determine what rents we need just to make this a profitable investment.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Good evening.
Good evening. Please bear with me, I'm not used to speaking in front of people, even a council. My name is Dean Phrase, I live on Highway 53 South toward a little community called Brackett. Probably a lot of you know where that is at.
If you would just give us your address, that would be great.
7155 Highway 53?
Thank you.
I am here to kind of solve the mystery, the land to the west of, we're talking, is there a way we can get the aerial view back on this screen? Or, or I can do that there? Just click it? Yep. Forward and backwards? So the land to the west of the yellow there, and it's not showing all of it, it's just showing a portion that is property that I own, so you can understand why I'm here. Okay, actually, the land, and you can see the interstate going through the white portion there, there's interstate, and the two squares above, anyway, the land north of that, my family owned for almost 100 years now, but then as the city grew around, it used to be country, and the city grew out and around the old farm, you know, we realized it was time to sell and develop. So we did, we sold and developed. We sold to developers, and we did develop a portion of it ourself. There's a beautiful school there now, and a church, you know, and everything's on an equal, on an equal base, you know, the property's the same size, the houses are the same size, it's just, it worked out beautiful, especially, you know, the way it happened there. So then time goes on, and I've still got that land to the west of the yellow there, and now it's time to develop again. What my main concern is, the density and scale of this project that the developer is, you know, wanting to do, what's that going to do to the land to the west, mine? I'll tell you right now, it's a dead end. There will not be a go-through, there won't be a through. It's basically impossible, the way the elevations are, and the crick bottom, it's all swamp bottom. Even that portion of, the second portion of the yellow to the south there of their development, pretty much most of that is unusable, you know, it's swamp. That's where they'll just, you know, dedicate it for Lois Creek, you know, trails and stuff. It's just not usable. So anyway, you can see where, I don't know, where I'm coming from, I like the word that they use, and they've got a, they've got a, and you probably have it in front of you, I think it's called the project narrative, is that correct? But, you know, in there, they say something about a transition from their very high density to low density. Well, that's them to me. Mine will be developed someday, and it will be annexed into the city. Right now, there's crops on there, it's been farmed forever, but it will, it will be annexed into the city, and it will, it will be developed. You can see, and I wish I had a better picture of that, but those two lands go, you know, one-on-one, they're together, they're like, you know, married couple, they shouldn't... They're, they're together. They, they're like, you know, married couple. They shouldn't be like separated. So when you drive through that land, I don't see why there has to be a transition. You should drive through that land, and it should be equal, you know, on the same basis. So whatever you guys decide that is, you know, appropriate there, you know, I'm, I'm fine with it, but just as long as I can do what they are doing, is what I'm asking. So. Anything else? Oh, that, one, there's a high line that runs right along, and where was that? Okay. See the lots two, one, two, and three? I believe that's the interstate right there to the, to the north. There's a high line that runs right along there. There's an easement there. And, you know, I haven't heard it brought up. And if I'm, and if I'm correct, I believe that easement is at least 27 feet from the power poles. Did I say, did I say a lot line? There's a power line there.
Right. You did say power line.
Okay, anyway. So there's an easement, and you can't, I don't believe you can do anything for 27 feet from that, from that power line. I don't believe. So that was never brought up. You know, the way the road is going in there, it's england right over toward mine, and by the time they get over to mine, they're going to be right up to the lot line. So I'm not really quite sure what that road deal is, you know? It's kind of pinching me. So there's a lot of concerns I have. I heard a little talk about, you know, traffic study. That was a concern, but evidently that's going to be looked into.
It will be. And if I could just interrupt you one second. Certainly, we have a limit of five minutes, and so I would ask you to wrap up if you could. But then, secondly, I would encourage you to visit with Mr. Allen, and he'd be happy to answer your questions about the road and, and any other questions that you have looking forward and moving forward in regards to the, you know, the project, both today and then in the future. But was there anything else specific that you had, that we can help you with?
No, I just wanted to show, I just wanted to show my, you know,
Yep.
my interest on it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
We appreciate it. And again, Rachel, I'm sorry. Councilmember Beaton, did you have a question?
Yeah. I'm wondering if you could share like a vague timeline of your plans to, for development?
Well, because, you know, the way the land is situated, my hands are tied to do anything until it gets developed in front of me, you know? And as development goes, you know, whether I do it or, or I sell to a developer, it will, it will continue going, you know? Of course. I mean, so, so it's all, it's all up to the development, development in front of me. Unless something comes up where we can do it sooner, you know, that's not out of the picture. Yeah.
Any other questions from council? We appreciate you coming up.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Again, I'll ask, is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is the public hearing on a charter ordinance relating to the City Council and the reapportionment of Aldermanic Districts of the City of Eau Claire. Ms. Repel?
So the Menards Annexation is on the agenda for approval at tomorrow's meeting. The annexation requires a new voting ward. The annexed property is in the 93rd Assembly District. City adjacent property is in the 91st, which means we need a new ward again. So two items on tomorrow's agenda. One is a resolution creating the new ward. The second is the charter ordinance adding the, adding the new ward to Aldermanic District Number Four. And the polling location will be CVTC Gateway. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Repel from council? I don't see any. Thank you. Moving on to a public discussion, Agenda Item Number Five, regarding the process to fill a vacancy of the City Council. Again, Ms. Repel. That'd be great. Thank you.
So with the opening for the at-large council seat, Councilmember Benjamin resigned on November 26th. State statutes indicate that since the vacancy occurred prior to December 1st, it would be on the April-spring election. So there is an election scheduled for April 7th, 2020. The notice of election was sent to media last week and published. So council's decision is to whether, is whether to fill the vacancy or not to fill it prior to the election. That is completely at your discretion. Should you decide to fill the vacancy, there is a proposed timeline and process in the packet, which is based on what council has done in the past. So it's up to you whether to follow that or not. The deadline, the application period, has typically been three weeks in the past. However, that puts us at January 1st for an application deadline. That is why the application deadline I'm proposing is Tuesday, January 7th, which just allows the time with the holidays to be open and fair for the application. That deadline also aligns with the statutory deadline for ballot access. And with that, it would just make, there be one deadline, so there wouldn't be confusion. Otherwise, Monday, January 13th would be presentations to council. You'd make a decision, decision January 14th, and then they would take their seats the second meeting in January. Councilmember Emmanuel does have an alternate process in the packet. So it is at your discretion. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Burge?
Thank you, Council President. Just to clarify, thanks for that presentation, Ms. Repel. So with your proposal, but what's been standard, it sounds like, someone will need to, if they're interested in serving on council, if we choose to appoint someone, they would need to turn in 100 and 200 signatures and the application on that date, on the January 7th. So they would need to get the signatures before they apply.
There are two separate processes?
Right.
So...
But they couldn't, oh, if they want to run.
Right. If they want to run for ballot access, if they want to be on the ballot, that's the 100 to 200 signatures. The process for you to appoint someone, that would be at your discretion, whichever process you would want to follow for what they need, would need to submit.
Okay.
It's confusing.
Council Vice President Emmanuel?
Thank you, Council President Weld. Question for you. I think it seems that council has to first get through if they want to appoint somebody or not. And in my review of the packet, I'm wondering if I have the correct interpretation of procedurally what would happen. So council would move to either vote on this plan, or if they were open to the amendment, they would vote to either one. They put it on the table. And then whichever one is on the table, then if it gets voted up, then that's the way it goes. And if it gets voted down, then that means council is rejecting filling the vacancy, therefore leaving it vacant. Basically, this has to get defeated to say, yes, we want to leave it vacant.
The last time you had a vacancy, you, yes, you voted to not approve the resolution. So I guess you could probably determine first if you're going to appoint or not.
Ms. Stromberger?
It's all part of the same resolution as is presented in the packet. So if the council's decision is not to appoint someone, you'd simply vote no on the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you. I'm sorry. Councilmember Worthman?
Has anyone filed paperwork to run yet?
No, I have not received any paperwork yet.
Thanks.
Councilmember Gregor?
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. Ms. Repel, the, would 5:00 PM be the deadline for both, if someone were to, both for a?
Yes, just to keep it consistent.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. This is a public discussion, so is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Again, I'll ask, is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none? Council Vice President Emmanuel?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I'd like to make a motion to amend our agenda to move up the public comment period to go before the public presentations. Typically, the conference report has been done at the very end, and it looks like there might be some kind citizens who are waiting to speak. So maybe we can rearrange it just to allow for them to speak and then proceed back to our conference report. So I'd make that motion that we just flip those.
A second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second. All those, or do we need to call them, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we will post, or put a pause on the public comment period. And at this time, I'm sorry, we're going to go ahead and go ahead with the public comment period and put a pause on the conference report. So if there's anyone here, have you signed up on the? Okay. All right. I'm just going to go through a couple of things, if that's okay.
Please.
Again, for those of you that wish to speak, we'll call you up, and it looks like we just have a couple. Please name, say your name and your, and your address. Please note that your thoughts or ideas should be regarding issues or concerns of citywide application. And please do not comment on issues that were on tonight's agenda, as council wants and needs to hear those comments during the noticed hearing or discussion. You will have three minutes to speak, and the same light system will, will be in use. With that, we will welcome Ms. Homestead and look forward to your comments.
Good evening, President Weld and council members. My name is Gail Homestead, and I live at 225 Riverfront Terrace. And the reason I'm here this evening is to express my appreciation for your service. Most of you have served during a period of remarkable change, namely, the continued revitalization of our downtown, our city. By listening and encouraging public engagement, you, along with others, have shepherded us through a very challenging period. Through that process, you enabled a community to not only survive, but thrive. And in a time of polarization, when some of our very democratic ideals are being challenged, your efforts, as well as that of others, helped unite our community. And believe you me, the concept of a public-private partnership, which was antithetical to best practice, created a great deal of angst and, at times, division. And now, you have towns and cities across the country asking, how did you do it? I think part of the answer lies in the past and the creation of Clear Vision in 2007, which some of you, I believe, were part of that. For those of you unfamiliar with the initiative, it was an effort to bring together a diverse citizen group to deliberate as to what the city needed to change to ensure a quality life for all citizens. So many of the changes you see now were first conceived during that Clear Vision meetings, followed by that strategic plan, which is kind of your roadmap, so to speak. And it was council members, some no longer on the council, such as Strobel, Kincaid, and so on, and your planning commissions, who thoroughly and thoughtfully considered proposals and projects that would fit with your strategic plan. For example, the drafters realized, as the city's population grew, there would be a need for the expansion of the Ellie Phillips Library. Now, with your commitment of 11.5 million for the upgrading of the infrastructure, it will jumpstart the project. As I said earlier, during this challenging time for our democracy, it is critical that we have committed servant leaders like you. In that sense, the public library and our public schools are your partners, with the same commitment to serve everyone who passes through their doors. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wishes to speak during the public commentary period? Seeing none, then we will close that portion of the meeting and move back to Agenda Item Number Six, which is the Councilmember Report of the 2019 Lea, Wisconsin Municipalities' Annual Conference in Green Bay. In years past, the council members have shared their, their thoughts and experiences at both the national and state conference, and we look forward to, to the five council members that took part in this year's conference. And we'll welcome Councilmember Burge to start us off.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to be brief, because there's five of us, and we all kind, we all went to the same thing, so. Yeah, yeah, we went to, lots of duplication. But it was good. It was good. It was good to have my colleagues there, too. It was great. A good road trip down there as well with the council president, so that was nice as well. So I thought, I'd just briefly mention the ones I went to, the sessions, and then kind of just take two, I'm going to say deep dive, but it's not that deep, so don't worry, into two of them that I found particularly interesting. But I attended a housing presentation, which I'm going to talk more about, so I'll circle back to that. Also attended a mock meeting, which was really interesting, and I, I learned from that how good we are as a body, and it can be really bad. So I'm thankful for you all and the dignity and respect that we show each other. I also learned some about liquor licensing, which was interesting. I was actually hoping it was, it was more about how to kind of get rid of nuisance properties. And the nuances were a little different than what I was looking for, because as a city attorney from Milwaukee, and so they have thousands of liquor licenses that they give out. So I was looking for hopefully some, knowing that we have limited amounts, like maybe they could get, provide some guidance. But it was still interesting. And it's always interesting to hear other municipalities work with issues like that. And then there was also an ethics one, which was always interesting. And then a large community roundtable where we sat with other members from large communities. And that also, it's always nice to hear what other communities are facing. So I attended, a lot of you know Mr., or probably Dr. Kurt Paulson from the UW-Madison. And he presented on affordable housing. He's kind of the expert, I feel like. He actually just did a statewide study for the, for the Realtors Group. If you just Google his name, I'm sure it'll pop up. It's really informative to read. But he also kind of just gave just some really good solutions, what we can look at. Let's see, look at my notes. So what I kind of learned, too, is that this actually state law requires municipalities to plan for adequate housing supply. So he, and he would say that a lot, so that, I think, really adds teeth. And I think we're going in that direction. But we know state law is also mandating that we have a plan, that, yeah, we have housing supply for everyone. He also points out that housing is economic development, because he phrases it, housing is where jobs sleep at night. And then, yeah, other things, too. And basically, it's, it's kind of just a thing, it's the, it's the important thing to do for a threat. important thing to do for a thriving community. He also talked about the challenges, though, too, and I, I do have, I, can I put something up? Can I put it here? And will it magically appear? No. Oh, there.
Yes.
That's fancy. So these are just, well, let's talk here, I guess. You guys can read it, but just, I feel, okay, where's, where's our scope as a council? And I think so, I mean, staff obviously does most of the work, I think, but I feel like this is somewhat in our scope, and this is what he offered as solutions. And we're doing, you know, we talk, we've talked a lot about these solutions as well. So, no, you, everyone. I have copies. And then here, he also talked about finances, and a lot of these, too, we also talk about, about using the TIFs, and using the Housing Amendment with TIFs closing. So just some other solutions that we could work as a city towards. And then he also brought up, just for, also, I think, which is in our scope, is just community engagement and leadership, and he, where he's from, Middleton, they have a Workforce Housing Task Force, and I know our city's talking about that, too, but he listed some examples up there, and then he just really highlights that, that's a really important work to do, so, to have that committee, so. So like, the bottom bullet is if you want to make progress, there has to be an organized group of leadership to educate and advocate, which I think is good. And then I'm gonna grab. And then quickly, another one I went to was on diversity and EDI, and so I'll just put that. So it was about Appleton, and they've done a lot of great work on there. Oops. So maybe, so they talked about dignity and respect, because Mayor Hannah talked about, okay, how can we frame it where people really can't argue against it? And it's hard to argue against dignity and respect. So these are some of the, the programs they're doing. I'm gonna flip it over. Oh, here's their dignity and respect campaign. And just what I took away is that it's been an ongoing, multiple years' work with them doing this. And their summary is just building personal relationships, creating welcoming atmosphere. So I think Eau Claire does all these things, but it's just about being more intentional about it, I think, and, so, yeah. So that's my presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. That was great.
Council President.
Uh, Council, uh, City Manager Peters.
Thanks. Councilmember Bergy, I think, is aware of it. I had an opportunity to be on a panel with Dr. Paulson, who she referenced earlier, and have reached out to him to work with us as a community for filling in the data gaps that we have around affordable housing, so the ideas that he presented there, we'll actually be bringing him to the community to help work with us on, on some data issues that we have, so.
That's great.
Thank you. Thank you. You're done.
Okay.
Good job. Councilmember Kristofferson.
Well, it's quite apparent to me that I was at the same conference that Councilmember Bergy was at. Those are the same highlights that I was actually thinking about doing, but, well, but I, I also wanted to say, it is so impressive to me that we have these educational opportunities pretty much unlimited to the council, and they're so valuable, not only in educating ourselves, but in creating a viable network of other professionals that you can contact when you're making decisions. So I, I think, I think that people who are anticipating a run for city office should be aware of the depth of support and resources that we have. But we, we did make a point of going to that deep dive on affordable housing, which meant we were getting up at the wee hours of the morning to drive to Green Bay, but it was, it was well worth it, and I think obtaining those overheads that Mr. Paulson made available. But the two things that he pointed out, that we are already doing, is that continuous engagement, and we're so fortunate to have so many community members that are engaging with us and engaging the public, but I, I think that one of the opportunities that city leaders have is, is to make, make sure that people are at the table, so that if, period. And then also talked about affordable with a lot of the criteria that we were talking about this evening, whether or not it's, whether it's near work, on bus routes, that kind of thing. So there were, there were several other discussions that I attended that, that were a little higher than my, my preparation, like there was a very interesting panel on special assessments and rethinking how that money is collected, and there were three specific alternatives, which I will send on, just to see if they spark any interest on others, but they were a little bit outside of my understanding. And I want to also say that we, as a group, were able to be at that meeting when our neighbor mayor, Brandon Pratt, received an award from the league on the Prairie View.
River Prairie.
River Prairie, thank you. Which that was, that was pretty fabulous, and I think that there are some things that we are anticipating in our community that we should be thoughtful about recognizing that leadership. And then the last thing that I was gonna mention also was the, that dignity and respect campaign, because it, we had not had our experience with UW EC campus at that point, but I think the way that Appleton has approached that is a really good example of how you, over time, change your culture. Because, first of all, they, they started with a half-time position in 1997. So they've, they've been tracking this for a long period of time, and they do have a full-time position at this point. But it was, it was so simple, but so impactful, that, that their vision statement is to create an environment for all to live, work, learn, and play. So it wasn't like where, it wasn't who you are, it's just everybody doing all of those things. And then the steps that they take in this program, which is, and I think it's a packaged thing that you just sign on to do it, but an individual, you could do a series of small or large group meetings, and you simply take, take a pledge to model these values, then you practice the 30 tips. So it's like writing it on your, your bathroom mirror. But then you are also saying that you're going to participate in the initiative. So once you have done this, you're also going to push it through your organization. So it's not, you're, you're just always expanding the impact of those values, and I, that was one of those things that I recognized that our budget is not going to even inch out that halftime, but this, this kind of commitment to moving those values through our community is, is doable. And I, the last thing I would say is, again, the value of these kinds of meetings for people that are imagining that they may want to be in public service, to, to have this in real time, people talking about decisions that are being made. I, I just think that people in our community, if they're thinking about public service, that they should, should go on the website and, and think about attending a meeting. It's, it's really great exposure.
Thank you, Councilmember Kristofferson. Good job. Councilmember Worthman, I'm sorry, any questions for Councilmember, Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I just have a question. I'm interested in learning more about this position at Appleton. I'm especially intrigued by your comment that started in 1997, which seems like they're very forward-thinking to be doing this at that time. Do you know what conversations were happening, or if there's a story behind, you know, how they managed to, to, I guess, be so, so visionary with this?
I, they did tell their story. They did talk about what that development was, and it's interesting. I may not quite have this accurately, so correct me, but their full-time position is filled by a woman of color, but I don't believe their initial... Do you remember who their first, I don't think their first one was, which, again, just indicates how they've really lived into what they want to be doing as a community. So I have, I have Karen Nelson's card here, but they're, they're really willing to talk about their story, and I think it's something that would be really interesting to have in our community.
Just a follow-up. I remember, too, that they, this was a different part, but when they were telling their story, they brought up, they have a large monk population as well in Appleton, and talking about hiring a monk police officer. I feel like that kind of, back around that time, kind of kicked it off, that we need to be really intentional, and I, that's links in my brain, but that's what I remember as well. So maybe that was part of it.
Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you, President Weld. I had an opportunity to speak on a panel with Ms. Nelson, and my understanding of the background of that position is that it used to be housed in the Police Department. And that was historically where it was, and then at a point in time, the council, I think, defunded that position in the Police Department, and the mayor worked probably over about a year process to then restore it to the mayor's office. And as Ms. Nelson explained it to me, the magic in creating that position is having it accountable directly to the elected body, because the electeds are the ones who are having that direct accountability with the voters, especially on an issue such as this. So when I talked to her about this, she really encouraged me to think about how do we really, if, if our city in the future were to have a position like this, how do we make sure that it is, how do we think about, and I guess, how does a council value having that accountability to the elected body?
I could just add one thing, too. The, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Annual Conference has a website out there, and on that website is all the presentations for all the work sessions. And all the data and materials that were presented to those that were a part of it is there for people to link to and, and gather more information, stuff, too, and for those watching at home, if they want to get a little more insight, that, a lot of, a lot of information there on the website. So, thank you, Councilmember Kristofferson. Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President Weld. This is actually my first time going to the League's meeting, even though it was my 11th year, but I found it really informative and certainly a lot of value. Two presentations that kind of come to mind that I want to touch on, I was also at the Affordable Housing presentation by, by Dr. Paulson, and I think one of the things I realized from that was that we're doing many of the things in our plan that we've passed are very on track with what is sort of leading edge in terms of affordable housing, and it was sort of a reassuring thing to be able to see that we are really on track with our plan. I think another thing, and this is some, a quote that was in his presentation that I wanted to bring up. He said, "We will never supply our housing crisis, we will never solve our housing crisis without more supply, but supply alone will not solve our housing crisis." And that's something that really jumped out at me, especially given tonight's conversation, about the fact that we really need to look beyond just adding more supply if we're, if we're really truly going to look at affordability of housing in our community. I went to a presentation regarding the flooding issues that have happened in Madison, and one of the things that really jumped out at me is how underprepared their community was for the floods that happened this last year. Whole portions of their city, in fact, didn't even have storm sewer put in. Other, other areas were simply just too small, inadequate in terms of infrastructure to carry the water away. Madison's east side is actually built on a flood plain. Sorry, a, a wetland, a former wetland, in the 1880s and early 1900s, was developed. And with huge flooding that has happened this past year, neighbors were, were calling city council, they were calling their city staff and saying, "How could this have happened? How did we get left in the dark in terms of, you know, their basements were flooded out, they couldn't access their homes?" And really what the takeaway from that was, is that, you know, I think our community has done an incredibly good job of looking at our resiliency in terms of storms and flooding, but it's a, it's an ever-changing and evolving problem, and it seems like Madison is sort of learning the high stakes that additional resources and additional planning can have in making sure people are safe and prepared for flooding. And that was a very kind of eye-opening presentation. I think the last thing I want to leave you with is the, the value that we have at these conferences in terms of connecting with our peers, connecting with professionals. I had a chance to meet with Mayor Genrich of Green Bay, and a day later, his chief of staff actually contacted me and said, "There's an interest by the mayor of trying to implement participatory budgeting in Green Bay." And I had had that conversation the night before, actually, when we were out at dinner. And I think those are the important places where, you know, communities can learn from each other. We can learn what we're doing, we can learn, you know, what's working and what isn't, and how we can better serve, you know, our residents. And I think, you know, hopefully, Green Bay is gonna pursue participatory budgeting, and I've said I would help as a resource, however I could. But I think just beyond that is the fact that there is so much to be learned from each other, and these events really help highlight that opportunity for us, so, that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Good job. Councilmember Greger, I'm sorry, any questions for Councilmember Worthman? Okay. Councilmember Greger.
Thank you, President Weld. I don't want to repeat anything here. I did go to some relatively obscure sessions, maybe. Some people would consider them such, but I will not talk about PFAS chemicals. That was one I went to.
PFAS.
Yeah, the...
Cut the mic, then.
Okay. I will not talk about that. But that, that is a concern. But, with that, I spent an hour thinking about. But I'll talk about engineering. I actually, there's a whole engineering track to the conference, and, and I'm kind of into that, especially as our street projects are coming up again, so, you know, there was... So anyone could go to, to these, and there weren't a ton of elected officials in this one, but it was about mini roundabouts and traffic calming. So they had a lot of engineers and public works folks at these. And it turns out that the, the, the compact roundabouts that we have recently constructed on State Street, on Hamilton and MacArthur, are some of the first examples of compact roundabouts in the state, and are considered, you know, a form of traffic calming, too. But we, there, there was a workshop about speed tables and raised intersections and speed humps, and there's technical differences between these things. But there, one of the things that was interesting, given we were in Green Bay, is that the city of Green Bay has a neighborhood traffic calming policy that they've updated for, actually, over a decade, that helps neighborhoods be engaged in the kind of changes that they want to see and have a specific way of proposing them. One of the, the aspects of the presentation was about median refuge islands, and we started to experiment a bit more with those in different areas over the last 15 years, like, I believe it was probably 15 years, 15 to 10 years ago or so, that we did, like, Summit, or not Summit, but Birch Street, or we did Third Street, or we did Bellinger Street. And then recently, we did Summit Avenue and State Street, so, kind of seeing how that, how those methods of traffic calming and helping people cross the street are, are utilized. One of the statistics that was brought up that I, that related to traffic calming I found most striking was that drivers are 80% more likely to yield to a pedestrian acrosswalk when they are going 20 miles per hour than going 40 miles per hour. So that's part of that discussion we had around State Street was, you know, if we can slow down traffic, we can make it a lot easier for people to cross. And kind of related to that, a whole nother aspect of the conference is the exhibitors, and they're, they're mostly there on day one this time. But you can talk to, you know, people that actually make the... on day one this time. But you can talk to, you know, people that actually make the signs for this, the warning signs for the street. There's intelligent warning systems is what they call them. So Tapco is one of the companies that does them, but there's all these guides that show how they use LEDs and lighting for, for speed awareness or pedestrian crossings, and our rapid rectangular flashing beacons that we've been using are kind of coming from some of these innovations that some companies that are based in Wisconsin actually manufacture and that our engineers are fully aware of. So, I guess that was one, like, specific area. One thing that kind of builds off of, was spoken about earlier with regard to, to the equity and inclusion and diversity priorities, is that there is a conference I was made aware of at the, at the, at another, one of the kind of exhibitor tables, and that was the Wisconsin Institute for Public Policy and Service, which is actually based on Wausau. They, they put on a statewide conference every year called Toward One Wisconsin, and I guess I could pass that around a bit here, too. But it's a conference on building communities of equity and opportunity, and there's actually a track called Creating Inclusive Communities, and this is coming up in Green Bay, April 28th through 29th, 2020, this Toward One Wisconsin Conference. And it's really something that anyone in the community who may be listening could attend, and it could be a great thing for the university and the city to send representatives to and all of our institutions in our community. But the website for anyone who's interested is inclusivity-wi.org, and that's coming up in April 2020. So, those kind of things that you learn about that, like, whether it be in talking to exhibitors or going to sessions or hanging out at dinner, you know, those, with some, with the local mayor, you never really know what opportunities will come our way. So, this is just my second year attending, and next year it'll be in La Crosse, so I think we could have an even bigger turnout, a little shorter drive, so, or I might try to ride my bicycle, we'll see. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Any questions? City Manager Peters.
Thank you. If I could just perhaps provide a little insight on that Toward Wisconsin, Toward One Wisconsin Conference. Again, I had the privilege of being on a panel for that last April, and some of you may be aware, but not all of you, but we've put in a bid, actually, to host the 2021 One Wisconsin Conference. So it's a, it's a joint project between the university and the city and the chamber, because the chamber is also very committed to this, and we think we actually have a very strong application, and we should know in hopefully a few weeks whether or not we're awarded that. And we're really excited about the opportunity of actually hosting that conference here in Eau Claire, because we think we have a lot to, a lot to add to it.
Thank you. I guess a couple of things, and obviously, it's always hardest to go last with this because everything's been covered, so I'll be short, but, you know, I think it was great that, you know, we were one of the largest contingencies as far as representation of a community that was a part of this conference, and that was, I think, you know, appreciated and obviously enjoyed by all of us that got to spend some time together. So I, again, thank you to everyone that was a part of that. I guess I, you know, I took, I think the nice thing, too, is we all made an effort to cover all the work sessions. We all just didn't go to the ones that we liked, but, so I think we really did get a representation or taste of every work session that was being offered. And so I also attended some that were a little bit outside my wheelhouse, but again, very, you know, educational and enjoyable as well. The levy limit strategies work session, obviously a lot to take in, but it was certainly really, you know, a lot to learn as well. And one of the quotes that came out of it, and again, just shows our appreciation for Mr. Winzan and his department and all of the staff and everybody that, you know, the statement was, "Making levy limits work within governing and budgeting is not a science but an art." And obviously, you know, a difficult thing to do, but to make all that work is admirable. So, one of the other things I attended was Not With My Tax Dollars: Budgeting Ethics. This was actually presented twice during the day. It was a real popular work session. But one of the quotes that came from there was, "No other document conveys the ethical values of a community than its own annual budget." And I really thought that that was a really great statement about a community and how we represent ourselves. It shows in how we, how we budget our spending as well. I went to a TIF work session titled "The BUT4 Test," and again, just so much to learn and understand, that whole process from top to bottom is, is a lot more than I can learn in 40 minutes, but certainly it was educational and insightful to be a part of that. What else? I enjoyed the exhibit hall. I think we all wish we could have driven away in one of those big, huge tractors or dump trucks, but they weren't giving us test drives with those, unfortunately. Yeah, again, congratulations to Mayor Pratt and the city of Altoona. I thought that was, that was a great award, and a lot of people that was there for the presentation, which I thought was really nice, too. The inclusivity in small and large communities, you know, the one quote I took from that, too, was, you know, "It's key to creating a welcoming atmosphere," and I think that that's something that we work hard at, you know, in our city. So, yeah, I thought overall it was a great conference, and I think we all enjoyed it and learned a lot. So, any questions? Counsel, Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you, Council President Terry Weld. I understand that you drove this year, and I'm wondering if you can drive an 11-passenger van next year so we can all go?
I would love that opportunity, yeah, actually. Yeah, no, I think it'd be fun to get everybody to go. It really is well worth it. So, and I agree with Councilmember Worthman. It was fun afterwards, too, the opportunity to sit down, and everyone was really, I think a lot of the council members that were attending this had, had met a lot of these attendees at last year's state and national conference, and so they were really nice in introducing a lot of people that they had met, and so it was a good chance for me to meet and have conversations with people. But it's also nice to sit down and have dinner and talk about other things, too, so.
All right. Well, I think that's all we have. If there is no objection from council, we are adjourned. Thank you.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. New Works is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton?
Here.
Bergy?
Here.
Christopherson?
Here.
Emmanuel?
Gregert?
Here.
Klinkhammer?
Here.
Lor?
Here.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
Thank you, and thank you and welcome to all of you joining us here this afternoon on a cold Tuesday, December 10th. This is our legislative session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its legislative session, the council deliberates and takes actions on the agenda items before us today. City staff and council members spent a great deal of time preparing for this meeting. Again, thank you to the residents that joined us last night here in council chambers, and then those that have reached out to us today. Thank you to Valley Media Works for live streaming this meeting. To watch, please visit valleymediaworks.org or visit channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. We have a full agenda, so we will get started. The first item of business is the consent agenda. Again, note to those that are here for an item on the consent agenda, just know that there'll just be one vote, and either all the items will be approved or not. So, do council members have any questions regarding the consent agenda, or does council wish to remove any item per separate consideration? Seeing none, then on a motion by Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Lor, the consent agenda is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, then clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
And the consent agenda is passed. We do not have any proclamations today, so we will move right on to our business agenda, beginning with agenda item number 16, a resolution authorizing the Community Development Department to apply and accept grant monies from the Wisconsin Clean Diesel Grant Program to purchase electric riding lawn mowers. Because this item amends the budget, a two-thirds vote of the elected members or eight affirmative votes is required for adoption. Mr. Noel, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, City Council. Community Development is teaming up with Community Services to apply for this grant. We're looking at, in line with the 2050 carbon-neutral goals, to try to green our fleet, so to speak, and so there's actually these electric lawn mowers now that are industrial for our parks, and this particular unit, I wanted to show you what the grant would cover if successful. The two electric lawn mowers that we're looking to add to the fleet would replace diesel units. If we had to buy the new diesel units, that would be the cost, $32,000 for two of them. The electrics are more, at 54 for two. The cost share for the city is roughly $29,000, and then with the grant request, which is 45% of that total cost, would be about $24,000. The difference between the two different type units with the grant would actually put us ahead at $2,300. So, makes sense from that evaluation point of view, from the operational capital point of view. From the operational point of view, this is a little, can I zoom in on here? You can zoom in a little bit? There we go. The diesel, we looked at just five, or one year, five year, and a 10-year savings here. So, diesel costs more than electricity if you fill up on diesel. With the current rate of diesel at the fueling facility, $2.38, if you just project that out, obviously, that's going to change over time, but would be on one fill, $26 to fill up one of these diesel lawn mowers. If you looked at the different sites, because we basically want to keep these electric mowers at a particular site, so if it was at Lakeview Cemetery, for example, it would be $3 to fill up the same eight-hour runtime for electric lawnmower. At CMF 10, or 9, 10, the rate's even better there. It's about $1.76, and then at 1040, the rate's a little higher there. It's 242. So depending on where we actually charge these things, if the electricity rate's really low, the savings are better for operations. So if you just cast that out over time, again, with these assumptions, we can see that it's way more expensive to actually fuel over time, over 10 years, five years, 10 years, one year, the cost of a diesel lawnmower versus the electric lawn mowers. And so that's why people are very interested in switching more over to electrics or hybrids. So, that, this type of thing will not only save us some money in terms of capital expense, but also ongoing expense when it comes to operations. Then the final thing to note, too, just from the literature, is that an EPA study showed that for every, for one three-horsepower lawnmower, it emits the same air pollution as 11 cars driving at 55 miles per hour. And so, the class of non-road lawn mowers, weed whackers, things like that are actually very inefficient in terms of their internal combustion engine, and they actually have a lot higher emissions calculations versus vehicles. And so, this is an area of our fleet that is actually a very good opportunity to not only to save operation expense, capital expense, but also work towards our greenhouse gas emissions. So, we think we have a pretty strong case to apply, and hopefully, we're successful come early New Year. Any questions?
Any questions from council? Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President Weld. Mr. Noel, thank you for bringing this forward this evening. Two quick questions. If the, if we're not awarded the grant, would the normal procurement still take place for regular lawn mowers?
Yeah, that would be a fleet decision, but we could, we could look at that, again, just projecting out the operational savings as well, but we would have to talk internally about if that makes sense or not.
Okay. And then the second question is just clarification. Did you say that, the EPA number was that three-horsepower lawn mowers, the same as 11 cars emissions?
Yeah, this is from the literature, from the vendor, actually, and so there's an EPA study that for one horsepower lawnmower, so basically, you're pushed behind self-propelled lawnmower at home. They found that the air pollution is as worse, equivalent as 11 cars driving at 55 miles per hour. So there's an equation there, and so we'll actually, we didn't have time to actually do the total emissions saved, but in the grant, we'll put that, and we'll be able to show. Again, it's not going to be a huge dent in our overall carbon footprint, but it's going to be significant when it comes to that area of our fleet, when it comes to lawn mowers. So it is, these type of internal combustion engines are very inefficient, and they pollute a lot more than even vehicles.
Thanks. Any other questions from council? Councilmember Beaton? I'm sorry, what? Okay. Are there any questions? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Mr. Noel, for putting this forward. And the, I guess my question was about noise, and I imagine the, the volume of the, of the lawn mowers is much less, and so perhaps people that live near city facilities that we would be using these would benefit, but also the employees. Can you speak to the, to the noise level of these machines?
Yeah, 78 decibels. So, you're still going to hear them, but in terms of internal, the drivetrain is actually going to be quiet, so what you're going to be hearing is actually more the blades cutting the grass.
Any other questions? I don't see any. I think we're good. Thank you. I'm sorry, you want to make a comment after the motion? Thank you. So on a motion by Councilmember Christopherson and seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I just wanted to raise that the, our Renewable Energy Action Planning Committee released its first draft of our Renewable Energy Action Plan, just, I think it was last week. Is that right, Ned? Yeah, it was last week. And so, even before we've, you know, voted on the plan, we're already, and this is certainly not the first action that we've taken since we've set our goals, I just wanted to raise the amazing work that's coming out of our planning department and from Mr. Noel, that we're already working to achieve these goals, even before our plan is finalized. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Any other discussion? Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, President Weld. Yeah, I do certainly support this and really appreciate the innovation and research that must have gone into this, too, because I hadn't heard a lot about these larger lawn mowers. So, I guess one of the points regarding the air pollution is that for these types of motors and for lawn mowers across this community is the, the air pollution that we're talking about is particularly harmful to humans, and that it's, it's not necessarily just about the pollution to, you know, to the atmosphere from greenhouse gases, but it's, it's really the, the type of pollution that impacts people and employees. And so I appreciate that we're tackling this as kind of a low-hanging fruit for how we can improve the health of the community in addition to meet our sustainability goals.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregert. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
we would be asking you to authorize an appropriation of $45,000 for the DNR portion of the funding. That would be appropriated in the city's Transportation Improvements Capital Fund and would be within that citywide trail program specifically. I'd be glad to take any questions.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Gregert?
Yeah, thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Mr. Solinger. The, I guess the Chippewa River State Trail obviously goes outside of city limits as well. Is, is any of this funding going toward trail maintenance outside of the city limits?
This would be within the city limits.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then on a motion by Councilmember Wirthman and seconded by Councilmember Gregert, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Wirthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 18 is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the City of Eau Claire and the Eau Claire Figure Skating Club for a five-year period. Again, good afternoon, Mr. Solinger.
Thanks again. So the resolution before you authorizes the city to execute that memorandum of understanding with the Eau Claire Figure Skating Club. In effect, what it allows for is the Figure Skating Club to administer and operate United States Figure Skating Programming out of the Hobbs Municipal Ice Center. There are a couple of programs, the junior, try junior club and learn to skate programs that are being, we're allowing the Figure Skating Club to utilize ice time at a reduced or free cost to provide that programming for folks that are interested in exploring figure skating as a new sport or just a new method of recreating in the community. The Figure Skating Club also, in addition to free or reduced ice time for specific programming, they would also have access to meeting room space up to 175 hours free. Beyond 175 hours, they would be charged at the city council-approved rates, which is in our Schedule of Fees and Licenses. They also would have access to use of one storage room, just to have access to their equipment onsite to make things a little easier for them from their operating perspective. Under the terms of the MOU, they would pay the city $5,000 on an annual basis for each year of the agreement, and it is for a five-year term. The city would utilize the $5,000 each year for basically minor facility upgrades as needed and open skating equipment on an as-needed basis. So that funding is just going back into municipal ice center programming. I'd be glad to take any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions from council? I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thanks again. So on a motion by Council Vice President Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Beaton, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Wirthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Wirthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 18 is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the City of Eau Claire and the Eau Claire Figure Skating Club for a five-year period. Again, good afternoon, Mr. Solinger.
Thanks again. So the resolution before you authorizes the city to execute that memorandum of understanding with the Eau Claire Figure Skating Club. In effect, what it allows for is the Figure Skating Club to administer and operate United States Figure Skating Programming out of the Hobbs Municipal Ice Center. There are a couple of programs, the junior, try junior club and learn to skate programs that are being, we're allowing the Figure Skating Club to utilize ice time at a reduced or free cost to provide that programming for folks that are interested in exploring figure skating as a new sport or just a new method of recreating in the community. The Figure Skating Club also, in addition to free or reduced ice time for specific programming, they would also have access to meeting room space up to 175 hours free. Beyond 175 hours, they would be charged at the city council-approved rates, which is in our Schedule of Fees and Licenses. They also would have access to use of one storage room, just to have access to their equipment onsite to make things a little easier for them from their operating perspective. Under the terms of the MOU, they would pay the city $5,000 on an annual basis for each year of the agreement, and it is for a five-year term. The city would utilize the $5,000 each year for basically minor facility upgrades as needed and open skating equipment on an as-needed basis. So that funding is just going back into municipal ice center programming. I'd be glad to take any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions from council? I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thanks again. So on a motion by Council Vice President Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Beaton, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Wirthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 19 is a resolution granting utility easement to My Tech Services Incorporated on behalf of Wisconsin Bell Incorporated on city-owned property located along the west side of Western Avenue. Good afternoon, Mr. Solinger.
Good afternoon. I will struggle through this with my failing voice, but it's a pretty straightforward resolution. What the resolution requests is a 12-foot easement along city property, along the western, the west side of Western Avenue for underground utilities. And this is Western Avenue going north-south here. The area for the easement is shown in the blue on the north side. The Chippewa River, or the Old Ape State Trail runs alongside of Western Avenue. And what this easement is for is to run underground fiber optic electric, or fiber optic facilities into this building and to expand it on that side of the trail. If the trail were right-of-way, an easement wouldn't be required, but when the city acquired the land from the railroad to build the trail, it came in as a parcel, hence requiring the easement that is before you today. The easement was presented to the Plan Commission and was recommended for approval. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions from council? I don't see any. Thank you. Hope you feel better. So on a motion by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Bergy, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Wirthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 20 is a resolution extending the current health insurance plan with Group Health Cooperative of Eau Claire for one year. Good afternoon, Ms. Selton.
Good afternoon. Before you, as a resolution authorizing the...
For our team to, to be able to contribute that way. Moving on to the, this is an interesting one, this kind of goes, I mean, it's a struggle, obviously, everybody wrestles with weight, we all do. And it's important, but kind of half and half right now, and, and we see people kind of slide around a little bit in those from year to year. So, but overall, relatively positive in the results. And moving on to the next slide, this is just a history of, of kind of what, what Ms. Selton talked about, the long experience we've had over the last decade in keeping those rate increases relatively low. That middle number, the combined ratio, that combines the medical claims and the administrative cost. To the, at 100%, we're breaking even, over 100%, it's costing us money, and under 100%, we're making just a little bit of money. We've tried to nail this pretty closely over time, and as a cooperative, as a nonprofit organization, we're a member governed plan, so we, that's our goal, is to hit that as close as we can. We've been able to keep that increase at about 3.8%. For our groups that have an active health promotion program, our health cost increases are right around 4%, 4.5%. The city's been able to stay under that. Groups that don't have that kind of program in place, the cost trend is closer to 8%, 8.5%. So, and I, on the next slide, I think, okay, this is the renewal proposal. We had a guaranteed maximum increase this year of 4%. We were able to only come in with a 3% increase this, this next year for the city. The folks that enroll in the Direct Primary Care Plan will only get a 2% increase, I think that's right, 2%. And, and so, to the extent that you have more people enroll in that Direct Primary Care Plan, the city will see savings right away from that. And then, as part of this kind of two-year program especially, to see how that Direct Primary Care Program works, we proposed a limit of no more than a 2% increase for 2021 as part of this renewal proposal. So, we're doing everything we can to keep it under control. And, and that'll be, that'll be a bit of an effort for us, but, but we think with the program, especially with the number of people that are enrolling in the new clinic, we see the opportunity to do that. And then the last slide is just a graphical representation. The gold line would be the trend line, if, if costs were increasing at that 8%, 8.5% range, and the blue bars is the actual experience for the city. So, over the last decade, that's amounted to an avoidance of about $33 million for the city. So, overall, pretty good. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Farrell?
I have a question.
Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President. I have a question about mental health care. If the employees choose the direct provider option, what does mental health care look like?
Exactly the same. And that, the, the Direct Primary Care Clinic is in addition to everything we have, and, and it'll lower costs for some of the services that are provided directly there, but anything else that they do, any other provider they access will be at the, at the same cost that they'd have otherwise.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Wirthman?
I have a question, but I'm not sure if it's for you or for... Regarding the choice that employees have now, and how does that, how does that enroll? So essentially, if you want to go with one of the other plans, you get a different set of benefits. Am I understanding that correctly?
It's, it's an HMO plan or the Direct Primary Care. There's a little bit higher premium increase if you stay with the HMO plan, but the co-pays are basically the same, except for the referral by DPC provider to a specialist, it's a cheaper co-pay. So there's some, some, a little bit unique, you know, differences, but for the most part, they still have access to the full provider network that group health clients do.
So it's essentially under group health still?
Yes.
Even though you have that other option?
And this is just an add-on of an additional clinic to the otherwise full network.
I see. Could I ask a question about that clinic as well? Is that similar to what the school district has done in terms of having a clinic accessible to their employees?
On the surface, it'll look like that. From a contracting basis, it, what the school district has is a Marshall Clinic committed to a standalone clinic just for them, but a Marshall Clinic. So they're referring to Marshall Clinic docs and, and bringing in some Marshall Field Clinic services and things like that. This will be an independent group of docs, and, and so, they're not going to be, if someone needs to see a specialist, they're not going to refer to one clinic or the other. People will be free to choose wherever they would have gone otherwise. And, and I think that the services that we're going to see are going to be significantly less expensive. The lab agreement that we have for all the lab testing that will be done through that clinic, they're passing through the lab costs that they pay directly with LabCorp, the reference lab that they use, with no markup. So, that in and of itself is going to save significant dollars. When I saw, what, I mean, right now, just to give you an example, a typical comprehensive cholesterol check, that'll look at all the components of a cholesterol check, will pay anywhere from $150 to $250 or $300 in network right now. The LabCorp rate that the Direct Primary Care Clinic will pass through to us is $4.98. Yeah, I know. I, I sent it, when I got the list originally, I sent it back to them saying, "I think you sent me the wrong list," because this doesn't make any sense, and they didn't know they're really that low. So, yeah, it's fantastic.
And then if I could ask one more question about working with our city employees, and how did, how did it come, come about that, that option was added this year? How did that happen?
You know, Mr. Peters and I have been talking about this for quite some time, I don't, many years, trying to figure out the best way to structure something, either like a near-site clinic or an on-site clinic, like other groups have done, and, and looking at different models through the years, and this was the one we settled on. And, and we talked about kind of the, the structure, and, and we've had staff involved every step of the way, meeting with Solidaris, and, and kind of working through some of the structures and things.
Thank you.
We had a series, we had a series of 10, we had 10 opportunities for employees to come to meetings and meet with representatives from Group Health and from Solidaris, and then Dr. Jody Rich was also there to answer all the questions that employees might have with respect to, you know, how is it going to be differ, you know, different from the current, you know, plan offering.
That's great, thank you so much.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for this presentation and to staff for all of the, it must have been quite a lot of work and many conversations to be able to create, you know, this new option. I'm just curious, I don't know a ton about, like, Direct Primary Care, I'm wondering if you have information about whether it has impact on health outcomes for people who have been in, like, a Direct Primary Care as opposed to, like, an HMO, or if that research has been done?
Yeah, there, there is some, it does have a positive impact. The quickest I can, answer I can give you is Solidaris does a customer service survey, and, and their net promoter score, which is a measure of just the simple question of, would you refer this service to a family member or a friend, is 100%. And, and the net promoter score can be anywhere from negative 100 to positive 100. And typical clinics and hospitals average about 50% to 60%. So they literally get every one of their patients saying, "Yes, I'd recommend this service." Because they can spend more time with their patients and kind of deal things more timely and in a more comprehensive way, it does lead to kind of just better health overall. But I'll try and dig up some stuff and see if I can find anything for you, and we'll send it over.
We, we hear a lot of complaints from employees when they go to their, their annual checkups, that they're afraid to speak up and, and share with their provider all of their concerns that they have about their health, because they're going to be charged for, you know, the visit, you know, the office visit, plus, it's not just now your, you know, your, your annual visit, it's, you have specific problems that they're going to charge an extra co-pay, or not, not even a co-pay, but an extra.
I did, I did kind of a quick poll of some of our comparable municipalities to see what they were seeing for health insurance premium increases. And what I found was it was between, you know, like, eight percent and seventeen percent. So I mean, if, if we can keep, if we can keep our, if we save money through the direct primary care option, then it's less that employees are going to be charged in premiums. So it'll be a cost savings, you know, all the way around for everybody.
Thank you. I do have another question.
Sure.
That's okay. This question might actually be for Mr. Winsans, but I'm, I'm just gonna go for it. Do we, so I appreciate seeing this kind of cost breakdown on the sheet here, but I wonder if there's a, if we know the full impact to our budget, our, our overall, like, general budget that this increase has?
Yeah, good question. On the general fund side, I believe we budgeted approximately a half a million dollars for health insurance increases. And that was assuming a four percent increase. So to the extent that we're seeing a three percent increase for twenty, twenty twenty, that'd be twenty-five percent less, or about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars less to the general fund than, than what we had budgeted.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gregert.
Thank you, President Weld. I actually have another question for.
Mr. Winsans?
Mr. Winsans? Thank you. I guess along those same lines, we're, we're looking at locking in a two percent increase for, for twenty twenty-one, is my understanding with this. And I guess how does that change the budgeting process that we'll be entering into for our operating budget next year? Obviously, it gives us some, some more certainty. But what do you foresee as the opportunities, having that number now versus having it be unknown until after we pass our operating budget, as happened this year?
Well, and, and, and to make sure everyone's clear, we, we were locked in this year at, at four percent. So, you know, we, we knew that that was the maximum number. And then the way it works is, is group health comes in. When they, when they have their, you know, full experience or, or have a good idea of what our experience was going to be for the last year, and then come in with what the actual rate is going, is going to be. In this case, in this case, three percent. You know, going into the twenty twenty-one budget with a maximum increase of two percent, you know, certainly puts us in a, in a better position starting out the process there. But I would caution that there are so many other variables that go into, that go into that budget, that, you know, health insurance, while it certainly can be a big piece, is only one piece of a much larger, larger equation. And there may be other revenue sources that go up or down, or other expenditures that go up or down, that I simply don't know about it at this point in time. So it's, like I said, it's just one, one element, but it's certainly a good way to start.
Any other questions for Mr. Winsans? All right. Council, or Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you, Council President. This might be for the city manager, but we'll see. So thank you to the HR Director and to our community partners for this wonderful option for our employees. And I'm going to ask a question that I've asked a few times in the past, when we look at this renewal. And that's around process for going out to market and receiving a bid. Now, I understand that this is a tremendous value. And if I were to type that out, that would be all uppercase, bolded, maybe a GIF with a smiley face. So this is a big deal. And in, as a local government, it's, it seems to me like a customary, when a city is entering to a significant type of contract like this, that often, they will go to a bid, and just to see what else is out there for market. So I understand that there's limitations with that as well. And so, and that this is just asking for a one-year extension of the agreement. What is a city's position on going out to bid if this passes and beyond twenty-one?
I'll happily take that one. And thank you for the recognition of, of where this is at, and, you know, that we're having a, you know, a three percent increase right now, and not to exceed two percent next year, which is, you know, has very significant impacts on helping us, you know, balance budgets in a very, very tight time. Each year, we, 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 we talk about what the process would be and what, and where we want to go with it. And part of the evaluation for that, because, because we also want to make sure that we can be assured that we're getting the best value for the dollars that we're spending in health care. So we will, we, we look around, we, we study what the market is doing, we talk to what's happening with our peers, we look at the program that's being presented before us. And then we've also invited conversation with other potential carriers. There's only a few carriers that are potential for, for, for our, our book of business. And so, for example, we did have conversations last year, and we said, you know, do you, to, to carriers, do you, and are you willing and interested in providing the type of wellness programs? Because the wellness program we have is very comprehensive and administratively, you know, has some complexities to it. And, and it's what's producing the results that we have. So, you know, we'll ask them, are you willing and would you be interested in, in providing, you know, that wellness component? And then we've also asked, do you have, you know, any clients where you can show a history of working with them and having the type of rate increases that we're seeing without significant changes to the, to the benefit plan? Because you can see, you know, you can have those kind of results if you, if you slash the benefits, basically. And, and so, you know, we'll have that conversation with them. And so far, we've not been able to have a vendor that comes in and says, yeah, we, we can do that. We can match what, what you've had for this experience. So we're sensitive to that. And, you know, when, when, I guess the conditions would change, and we're not able to see this kind of control of our costs and this kind of engagement, you know, with a, with a provider, you know, we would, we would certainly be looking at going out to market. You know, one of the challenges with, with changing markets is the, the adoption for the employees. Employees get used to health insurance. And changing health insurance is a very personal thing for families, and it's not something you want to do lightly. And in our experience, and, because we, we did that, you know, back in, I think, two thousand and five or six, I would say we chased the market, and we, we went for a low bid. And it was low for one year, and the next year, we saw a fifty-seven percent increase. And so, you know, generally speaking, you know, having a longer-term relationship where essentially, we're self-insured with eight percent administrative cost. And unlike a for-profit company where, you know, there's, there's a profit margin and there's higher administrative expense, this is a cooperative. We get to see transparency in what our claims actually are, and we're essentially paying eight percent over what our claims are. And, and without actually having to, you know, be self-insured. So it, it is a unique situation, but there's, you know, these are big dollars. It's very important to our budget. And it is a, a process we look at each year to make sure we're still bringing good value to the taxpayers and to the employees in having quality health insurance available to them and their families.
May I have a follow-up, please? Thank you. Thank you so much for that. And just even the idea of changing regardless of price feels, and, and I think would be interpreted as being destabilizing and, and concerning for many reasons. I think just understanding that, does the city have a, a policy in place that they go out to bid for services such as health insurance? Or I understand you're saying you're kind of measuring the market conditions, but is there a policy that the city says, you gotta go out for a bid after, you know, it's probably been probably over ten, fifteen years, right, for, for this agreement? So when, when is there a threshold to go out for bid? Or is there?
I would say for this contract, that threshold is when, when, when we are, when, when we think that we can do better out in the marketplace versus what, what we have. And, and so, you know, it, again, at this point, we, we don't believe that there are other providers. And, and again, we have this conversation, you know, every year. It's a very public conversation, and, you know, we don't have vendors that say, oh, by the way, you know, we, we can beat that. We can do better than what you have. And so, you know, it, until, I guess, the, the, the program is, is no longer, you know, essentially beating the market and beating, you know, the performance that we see for our municipal peers. And as Ms. Salton, you know, pointed out, you know, we, we did survey our other local government, you know, peers, and all of them have, what, five to double-digit, you know, increases that they're seeing this year. And many of them have not to exceeds that are in the eight or double digits, you know. And, you know, here we are with a, with a three percent increase this year, and not to exceed about two percent next year, which is pretty unheard of.
Sure.
Thank you. And thank you very much for that information. So if I'm understanding correctly, there is no set city policy that compels the city to go out for a bid?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then the last is, I, I would just ask for maybe, I think it's helpful for me as a councilmember to understand, you know, sans having a bid process where we can see the evaluation happening, I think it would be really helpful to have the information communicated to council, so they can understand kind of the backside of that assurance that this has been compared and has that vetting. Is there a way that the manager can work to have that communicated with council?
Yeah, we can, we can try to include more of that type of information, you know, in the packet.
Any other questions for either Mr. Farrell, Mr. Salton, Mr. Winsans? And seeing none, on a motion by Councilmember Law and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I just want to observe, the council has talked about the many aspects of income and expense that makes living affordable in the Eau Claire community. And I just want to recognize that as an employer, the city is really offering an excellent example of value to the employees, both in mentoring, monitoring good health practices, but also really watching the, the needs of the families, so that their income isn't going to unnecessary medical expenses. So when we talk about how can we make housing affordable, this is a really great example for us to hold for other employers, to look for something that's excellent. But I, so I want to commend the partnership and the really intense conversation relationship that's been developed.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Law.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emmanuel.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-one is a resolution creating a new voting ward within the city of Eau Claire. Does council have any additional questions for Ms. Repel? Seeing none, and on a motion by Councilmember Klinkhammer and seconded by Councilmember Worthen, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Law.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emmanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-two is a resolution approving appointments and reappointments to various boards, commissions, and committees. And I will read through the appointments. To the Administrative Review Board, Ross Branbold. To the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Matthew Bolter, Kyle Birlard, Scott Kametz, and Aaron Salmon. The Housing Advisory Board, Judith Mosley. To the Landmarks Commission, John Mann as an historian representative, and Jennifer Ebert as a real estate representative, and Greg Kokan as a citizen representative. To the North Barstool Medical Business Improvement Board, reapportments, reappointments to Lisa Aspenson, Amy Erickson, Julia Johnson, and Blaine Mattoon. To the Redevelopment Authority, Rick Kaiser. To the South Barstool Business Improvement District, reappointments to Eric Klaus, David Otzen, Teresa Pershaw Birmingham, and Stuart Schaefer, and a new appointment to Dave Strobel. Water Street Business Improvement District, a reappointment to Aaron Bryce, Georgia Rand, Randenberg, Mickey Judkins, and Sandra O'Connell. Waterways and Parks Commission, a reappointment to Ellen Faulkner, and a new appointment to Jessica Schoen. The West Grand Avenue Business Improvement, reappointments to Marty Fisher Blakely, John Curtis, and Ann Sessions. And to the Zoning Board of Appeals, reappointments to Katrina Born and Timothy Hay. Does council have any questions for the advisory committee in regards to the appointments? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I'm just interested in confirming that those that were not named, is that because there are no names on the resource bank for those areas?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to add, as an addition to kind of what happened at our meeting, we discussed in addition to these various appointments, we also discussed some changes to the Board of Review. The council, or the city manager had brought forward an idea to help us with the, with the Board of Review. We all, I think that we all feel a full day on the Board of Review is a little taxing for, for such a large group of us. And so, the, the Appointments Committee had made, made a recommendation to make some changes to their Board of Review to include three citizens with two alternates, and two councilmembers with one alternate that would be appointed during our organizational meeting. And, and that would also, the, the Board of Review would still include the city manager and city clerk. And so, city staff is going to be working on that, following those recommendations. And we may see an ordinance change or a resolution, some, an ordinance change coming forward soon before the next Board of Review cycle next spring. We also had checked in on, on some changes to our board commission and committees' public, public hearing process. And so, that, that, that work continues, and we're hoping to see some changes come forward with that. The Volunteer Appreciation Breakfast is coming up on January eighth at seven AM at Hobbs Ice Center. So council members are invited to that, and it's a, it's a morning for a breakfast to appreciate our volunteers and our boards, commissions, and committees. And then finally, we, we discuss some, some issues related to an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Any other questions in regards to the appointees for various boards and commissions and committees? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Council President. I actually have a question for Councilmember Beaton. You mentioned that one of the things we talked about was the.
Counsel, oh, sorry. If I may interject the point of order, Councilmember Anderson, I, I don't know if those other items were officially listed on our agenda. So I wonder if discussion around them beyond the update might be beyond what we've publicly noticed?
That's just fine. I can, yeah, I can learn about it later.
My apologies.
At another meeting.
I think we should, it seems important. I have us the cheers, consideration of that.
I appreciate the input, so we'll. You're okay with reaching out? Okay. Any other questions in regards to the appointees? Seeing none, and on a motion by Councilmember Gregert and seconded by Council Vice President Emmanuel, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Law.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emmanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
And those appointees are approved, and again, our appreciation for their, for their volunteering. Moving on to agenda item number twenty-three, resolution approving the final plat for Woodland Hills Estates. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Allen? Seeing none, and on a motion by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Anderson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emmanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Klinkhammer.
Aye.
Law.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-four, resolution authorizing the City Council of Eau Claire to enter into partnership with Chippewa County for the development of a potential business park. Good afternoon, Mr. White.
Good afternoon. The resolution before you stems from a, a communication the city received from the Chippewa County Administrator, indicating that they were exploring the potential for a new, or expansion of a, a business park within Chippewa County. They have secured the services of consultant at advantage out of Madison, and are, upon their request or advice, had sent out a communication to all the communities within Chippewa County, asking that the issue be brought before their governing bodies, and indications being made if the community was interested in working with Chippewa County to explore the potential for industrial park. This is a very early-stage process. There are a number of considerations that will be going into place. They're looking for a park of at least two hundred contiguous acres. They'll be looking at communities and locations that can be deemed shovel-ready, that have the, the capacity to bring in infrastructure and provide continued services to industrial park. We'll be looking at those and working with their consultant if the resolution passes, and seeing what we can potentially offer within the city of Eau Claire on the north side of our Chippewa County border. The big thing we feel on the city's behalf is this is an opportunity to show Chippewa County that. County that Eau Claire is a, is a community that's part of that county. We have an interest in seeing that part of our community grow, and we are excited at the prospect of being able to support Chippewa County in promoting economic growth within that part of our community. So at this point, I answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President Weld. Mr. White, as I understand, this doesn't commit us, at least not right now, to any financial investment. It's essentially your support and help.
Correct.
And our support and help of this project.
Correct. You know, at this stage, they're looking to see what communities have a site that could potentially be submitted as industrial park. There's no financial commitment on this point.
Thanks. Councilmember McGregor.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Mr. White.
Yes.
I, I know a related, I guess, kind of based on Councilmember Worthman's question, there's, I understand that we have some funding in our capital budget set aside for purchasing of industrial land in 2020. How does that fit into the long-term effort that this is?
That could be something that comes into play. Obviously, we'll be looking at where we have industrial land, what makes sense to do expansion. Is there an opportunity to collectively add additional space to maybe one of the existing industrial parks, such as Gateway Industrial Park, which is a northwest project in the community? But as far as whether we do start accumulating, it really depend on what we think the potential is, what the potential for shovel-ready services are, what the cost would be to provide infrastructure services, annexation, et cetera. So there'd be a lot of investigation that would go into before we made any type of proposal or decision to move forward to present to the council.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
So on a motion by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Bergy, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say, thanks for bringing this to council. I know that it was a request from the Administrator in Chippewa County, but thank you just for helping us with that conversation. And I, in my day job, I get to work across a three-county geographical area, and that was new for me. I was actually working in a different county before then. But I have to say, what a joy it is to be able to go to our neighboring counties on a regular basis and see the gifts and the value that our counties bring, not just the county as local government, but all the community partners that are there. And I know there's a quote that I think a lot of folks here on council appreciate from the late Senator Wellstone, who says, "When we all do better, we all do better." And this is true. This type of partnership really helps lift that up because Chippewa County is doing well and the community there is doing well, then that will help us. And if we're doing well, we should be helping them. So this is a wonderful, I think, first start on our journey together, and them really diversifying their economic development portfolio.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 25 is a resolution approving the process to fill the vacancy on city council. And if I could, due to this resolution addressing two questions, if council's in agreement with it, I would like to make a motion to divide the resolution into two parts. The first part would be, should we appoint someone to fill the current council vacancy until the April 7th to 2020 election? And the second part would be, if so, what process and timeline does council wish to Is there any questions, first of all, in regards to that? All right, seeing none, as I understand, this, this item does not involve any discussion. So there, is there a second? Councilmember Bergy, seconds. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll in regards to dividing this question.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Clinkhammer.
Aye.
Lor.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
All right, so then I will seek a motion to move forward with the appointment of, or whether or not we should appoint or shouldn't appoint a council member up until the April 7th election.
Can we just get that in a sentence? Let's see.
Sure. Do you want me to make the sentence?
Sure, or I'm happy to, if you want.
I guess the question is, should we appoint someone to fill the current council vacancy until the April 7th, 2020 election?
That's a question we have to say in a sentence, so council will appoint, how about, council will appoint?
Certainly.
Okay.
Council will appoint someone to fill the current council vacancy until the April 7th, 2020 election. Are we comfortable with that? Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Councilmember, Vice President Emanuel, and Councilmember Worthman is seconded. Is there any discussion? Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you, Council President Weld. This is a rare and very serious responsibility that council has to think about, how do we best serve our citizens in a time of a vacancy? Certainly, council has experience serving with a vacancy and also serving without. And as I think about where this conversation might go, and as I thought about it over the weekend, I think about maybe some of the best youth books. That's Choose Your Own Adventure. So you turn to page 57, and you can have this outcome, and you can turn to page 37, this happens, and no matter what page we turn, it's a good outcome, because this is a good council. We work very well together to serve the citizens in our community. So I just want to share that, that however this goes, I really do believe that. I'm in support of filling the vacancy. I think that we have some important upcoming decisions, some of which include major redevelopment along Menominee Street with the Son and Tag Project, looking at just potentially this body looking at a referendum of, do we want to exceed levy limits? And could we have another representative from the community to help us round out those decisions? And then the third thing I think about is actualizing our strategic plan that council just adopted. And we will be having conversations with city manager on that. I think it's actually, would be a neat gift to have somebody with us for those conversations, because maybe it makes sense. I know we're all kind of working through it, but I think it's a nice little audit to have another voice to say, well, why are you guys thinking it that way? And this isn't making sense, or just to kind of help us refine it. So I think there certainly are opportunities for somebody to help with that. Of course, if this goes, if we vote yes in the affirmative, then we can talk about process. But to me, I think it's, what I would be looking for if we were to appoint somebody is somebody who has experience either serving in local government, whether they served here or somewhere else before, and potentially somebody who's not interested in running for the spring election. And that's just my, what I think about, what would really help our team out. So again, no matter how this goes, we're going to be just fine. Our city will be just fine. And I think we have an opportunity to create a space for an additional voice to best represent our almost 70,000 people here in our community.
Thank you, Council Vice President Emanuel. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. I'll also be supporting us filling the vacancy for the time being. I think what's important to me is the fact that we had an election last April in which people went to the ballot and entrusted someone to represent them. And I think we ought to consider that in this decision, that especially, as Councilmember Emanuel pointed out, with huge decisions on our horizon in the next four months even, I think it's important for us to have full representation for the folks that voted in April. They want that. I think there's also precedent to us filling a vacancy. Only one out of four, sorry, one out of five vacancies that I have seen in my 11 years on city council did we not fill the vacancy. And that was a special occasion in the sense that it was a council president seat we were deciding whether or not to fill. And that was last year. In other cases, with council members who have stepped down, we have filled that seat. And we've often put someone with experience in that position who can jump in and help us right away in terms of helping to make the, the difficult decisions that we make. So I think for those two reasons, I will be supporting the idea of filling this vacancy for the time being until the April election.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, Council President. So I think, I thought a lot about this, a big decision, as we've said. And I agree with Councilmember Emanuel that whatever the outcome is, it's going to be fine. But I just remember when we, this decision was before us in 2018 in the summer, and I wanted to fill the vacancy of the council president. And the discussion that night was that, and eventually, you know, we voted to not feel it, fill it, but that we have operated as a council without all members. And I was glad the discussion was about not filling the vacancy. So that's what kind of comes to my head now. And last time was nine to 10 months that we went without having someone. Now, it's what, three, three months, three to four months? So I'm more towards just letting the public decide. I mean, it's an elected position, and we are close to the election. I think, and I see the value in having someone, but I also see the value in letting, like I said, the public decide and elect who they want here. And I think we will be fine for 10. You know, I go back to the arguments of what, you know, we talked about that evening, you know, of why, you know, we will be okay with not the full council. So I am leaning towards not appointing someone for the next three months.
Councilmember Clinkhammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, when we split the motion, or the resolution, I think my, my answer would be which, which process are we going to use if we do fill it? One, I would say, fill it. The other one, I would say, no, don't fill it. If transparency and openness about the process is a goal, as was stated with the proposed amended process, then I would agree with Councilmember Bergy. I think that the most transparent method is to leave it up for election. It's, by the time we finish the process, we'd have five, six meetings maybe, and I think that we can operate just fine with being one person short, and then the process will go forward.
Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you. I, I've also thought a lot about this. It's weighed on me in the last week or so, and I have decided that I will be voting no on this resolution. I agree that it's just hard for me to be able to justify appointing somebody for two or three months when we had vacancy for 10 months so recently. I think that, you know, for two or three months, we can have a vacancy and let the voters decide who's going to fill this seat. I also feel pretty strongly that whatever process we go with, if we were to appoint, we have two options in front of us. I don't believe that we can go through a meaningful appointment process, that it's too quick. Not only is it not enough time, but it's also over the holiday, which makes it difficult for all of us to be here and to be present, but also people in the community to be physically present and also mentally present for, for that. So I'll, I'll, I'll be voting no. But agree that we, you know, we will work great either way.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I, I agree with a lot of the comments here that I think we're a body of people that bring a lot of different perspectives, and I think we're going to be fine, you know, either way. But I'm inclined to support appointing someone, and here's why. I think we all who are sitting here know that running for office and, you know, coming to city council meetings for a three-year term is a tremendous commitment, and a lot of talented individuals with, who bring unique perspectives are just not able to make that commitment, or maybe they're not ready to make that commitment. And one of the things I think a shorter appointment does is it could allow someone who may be thinking about running not even this term, but another time, come in and learn a bit more about what this process is like. There's a way that it could be inspiring to somebody to learn more about civic leadership and have that experience, I think will just help us to continue to grow more leaders in the community. So I think that's kind of how I was thinking of, of this role, as a, as a good opportunity for potentially an interim person who is curious about a future, making a future commitment down the road. So that's my thought.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Lor.
I, thank you, President Weld. I think I will be still voting no. Also, I think that we, as the elected council, and I think that we need to take time, have the public decide who will be service, their service, and they will be here to elect it to serve their, and I will be voting no. I think that, I, I think that we want to get good city council in, on the seat that everybody in the community trusts and believes to it. So I will be voting no tonight.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Gregert.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. I guess I've been somewhat undecided on this here. I definitely think there's, there's merits on, on both, with, regardless of what we decide, I guess. I mean, some of the things that I'm considering are, you know, we just had a two-thirds vote that was required for a vote that we just took on amending the city's budget, and that requires at least eight council members to, to vote. And obviously, the more members you have, it's easier to reach eight. There's also, the way that this discussion has been going, it's possible this could be a tie vote, like if we, you know, have 10 people here in full attendance for our current membership. So it's more likely to have an odd number if we start with an odd number. So those are two arguments for just simply having more representation right away for those five months of, I guess it'd be about four months, that there would otherwise be a vacant seat. So that kind of helps me lean toward wanting to appoint someone. But I do think there's, it's kind of awkward, either, both of the options that we have in, in front of us for how we fill it are, have deadlines, one of them right over the holidays, the other one coinciding with ballot access deadline, which I, you know, it's possible we could have a very interesting time in the city clerk's office on the deadline right before 5:00 o'clock to see who's going to be putting in for either of those options. But, and I do think, you know, on the, on the side of the issues that we have in front of us over the next three or four months, as Councilmember Emanuel mentioned, they are significant. And one of them that I would, I would add is that we will have all of our, our streets projects in front of us for, for consideration and a vote before the April election. So, and those are obviously very important to me, so having kind of all hands on deck for that would be helpful. So kind of leaning towards supporting the idea of appointing, but I'm certainly listening to other perspectives on it. And, you know, last time we had an opening, we had a vacancy, I did vote to appoint, although that was a much, for a much longer interim period. So, yeah, it's just kind of a tough decision, but I'll figure it out.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregert. Any other discussion? Councilmember Beaton.
Could, could we get a clarification from the clerk about the amount of time that we're looking at appointing for? I've heard five, four, three, and two months, and I think we should, it matters to me, so I just thought we should clarify. So we're looking at appointing somebody either at the beginning of January or the end of January, meaning, how many months is that?
Well, depending on when, which process you choose, they would either take their seat for the first meeting in January or the second meeting in January. The elected person on the April 7th ballot would take their seat at our organizational meeting in April. So...
The second meeting in April?
The first, so the 7th.
Oh, yeah, that's right, okay.
April 21st, I believe.
Okay. It's about three months, right?
Any other discussion? I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Did you have?
I do have some questions.
Okay. Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you, Council President Weld. So it will be all the way through the middle of April, so it's about eight, eight meetings and in, in addition to any other additional work sessions we might have. I guess what I, the, the other thing that came to mind for me is that we have, I think, two people sitting here at this table who were appointed. And, you know, from my experience, I can say that I, I did feel like I could make a difference during that time. It was a truncated window of time, longer than four months, certainly. But there's been a lot of times over my experience on the city council where it seems like, oh man, if we just had another voice at the table, what a, the way the conversation deliberations go, they do have an impact. So I'd say I think there certainly is a value, just from my own experience, and then from just thinking about, again, supporting and rounding out that conversation possibility.
Thank you. I am the other, or one of the other products of, of an appointment. My, my period of time serving prior to the, the next election was, was, was for one year. I would, I served as a, as an appointed council member. But still with that in mind, you know, I, my, my one concern, and which I guess leads me to not supporting, appointing someone is that, I, I feel like that it'll, it will have some sort of effect on the, on the election itself. Because I feel like whoever it is that we appoint will, will, will have our endorsement, will have the council's endorsement. And I don't know if that is, you know, how we want it to be when people go to the ballot in April with one individual having an advantage over, over the others. When it is really the, the city that, that we want to be electing this person. And, and we want that to be a, a fair and, and, you know, due process in regards to that elec, that election process. So for, for that reason, I, I feel like to, to really make this a, a position that is elected, you know, by the community and, and, you know, really, I guess, eliminates hurrying and rushing somewhat to a certain degree, this appointment process, I, I would, I would not support the, the appointment. So, is there any other discussion? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. And just to be clear, the, my, my feeling of it is, is that if we decide to appoint someone for the short term, I see it as more of a caretaker role, that that person would be serving but not running. And that's something that we have discretion over as a council. If we want to appoint someone's, the person we choose, it's often a question is, are you going to run or not? And for me, it would be someone who would, wouldn't be running in April's election, but someone who could help us with the deliberation over the short period. And one last thing, I think this conversation about letting the voters decide is really important, but I think part of that discussion also is that the voters decided they wanted someone to serve them just eight months ago, 10 months ago, not even, and that was Laura Benjamin. And that without us putting someone in her seat, then they don't have that person representing them. So in some ways, their choice then is not fulfilled. And I think that's a part of the conversation. They chose on April last year to have someone represent them. They don't have that person right now.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
No.
Bergy?
No.
Kristofferson?
No.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Lor?
No.
Weld?
No.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
There were four ayes and six noes.
So that item is defeated. I guess in regards to the second question, I would seek a motion to postpone indefinitely in regards to council's decision on what process and timeline it wishes to utilize. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Council? Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
I have clarification, so we're voting no.
We're voting to dismiss indefinitely the second part of our...
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that item is postponed indefinitely. Agenda item number 26 is an ordinance amending Chapter 18.45 of the Code of Ordinances entitled Site Plans and the Zoning Code provisions for the Multi-Family Housing Design Manual. Does council have any additional questions for Mr. Allen? Seeing none? Let me get myself back together here. On a motion by Councilmember Lor and seconded by Councilmember Kristofferson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Anderson? Aye.
Beaton?
Bergy?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 27 is an ordinance rezoning a property located on the north side of Seymour Road, east of Andover Avenue from TR-1A and R-1 to R-1P, and to approve the general development plan with a reduced front yard setback. Again, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Allen? Seeing none, and on a motion by Councilmember Klinkhammer and seconded by Councilmember Worthman, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously.
Bergy?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Geez, what happened to transparency? I could see...
My apologies.
Could've used an extra council member.
Now that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 28, an ordinance rezoning a property located at the west end of Lorch Avenue, south of Interstate 94, from TR-1A to C-3P to R-3P, and to adopt the general development plan for commercial development and multifamily development for apartment buildings. Again, this item was postponed from October 22nd, 2019 council meeting. Is there any other additional questions for Mr. Allen? Councilmember Anderson, would you like Mr. Allen to come up?
Thank you, Council President. I actually have a question for Chief Bell if, sorry. If I... Thank you. I'm sorry, sorry if I'm catching you off guard here.
Possibly.
I just, I just had a, had a thought, if we're adding a housing development of this size, which I think is, is 198 units, I'm just thinking of that fire station over there and if there would be any challenges with emergency response if those roads are... I just, I just was thinking about it today, so I apologize if I'm catching you off guard.
So, challenges to the development, to the increase in residences?
Challenges to just the increased load on that fire station, basically?
There will be, in the long term. In the short term, when I say short term, this, you know, next year, year after, I, I believe we can handle that increase. I, all along, I've been proposing that at some point in time, we have to bring that station up to five people. I think we have a, we're about two years away from doing a remodel to make it so that can accommodate five people, and then hopefully, three years away from bringing up staffing. Obviously, we recognize the financial difficulties of bringing up staffing. So bringing in more tax revenue...
Okay.
Helps with those difficulties.
Could kind of help with those difficulties.
Yep.
Great, thank you for that feedback.
All right.
Any other questions? Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, this is a question for...
Mr. Allen, would you join us?
Yes. Mr. Allen, thanks for, for your help, and thanks for this email, too.
Sure.
I'm just trying to get a better understanding of this, the parking and traffic analysis. Said here something like, there's going to be an additional, there's going to be 200 to 800 trips per day per acre. Is that correct, per acre, with peak gener, hour generation of 15 to 100 vehicles per acre? Um... Per hour?
I could speak on behalf of Senior Solberg with his voices.
Oh, I, I think that was a typo. It should be per day, per...
No?
Or, for the peak hour.
For acre, and then... That's for the commercial development.
Well, for the commercial development right here, so...
Simply for the commercial development.
Yeah, correct, not, not residential portion for it.
That's just for the commercial.
Commercial, correct.
What's, what is it for the resident, do we have that for residential?
Two to five vehicles per hour.
Two to five.
Per acre.
Per acre, and that's times 13 develop, oh no, that's the total developable. Okay. I guess that, I, I don't, I haven't done the math on this, but to me, there's a lot of traffic, potentially, especially as it gets developed out. The commercial on the north side of this, the additional buildings, residential potentially, plus any additional residential that goes to the west. And we had someone here last night who said they would like to do similar density, potentially. So I'm just trying to get a feeling for, if all of that happens, how are we, are we prepared for that at the 94, sorry, 93 Lorch intersection? Is, is that, are we prepared to have that level of traffic? Sorry, I, my apologies, this is a question for Mr. Solberg.
Thank you for, for that. And this is, yeah, I'll defer to our city engineer related to the traffic situation.
Yeah, we, we had the discussion with DOT when Mills Fleet Farm went in across the highway, and that intersection is challenged, and there are things that would have to occur with that intersection likely in the future. They'll monitor it, they can do a lot of treatments with just the traffic signal timing to, currently, if there's a large event at Florian Gardens, for example, they'll adjust the signals to allow that, that large left turn movement out. It could come down to adding turn lanes in the future, multiple dual left turn lanes coming out of there. So likely, as it develops, and there's more commercial and residential, there, there could be additional treatments that would be necessary, both on the part of the DOT, mainly on the main line portion of it on 93, and then as the city is obviously in charge of Lorch Avenue on each side, so... But in the short term, there wasn't any improvements being planned.
So, and if we do those improvements, that's being paid for by the city or by the developer?
The, I guess the, the improvements on Highway 93 would be paid for through the state. They monitor the traffic on Highway 93. If we have improvements on Lorch, we typically would special assess, and I guess at, at that point, when it gets to the point, treat it like a normal street project unless there was something spelled out differently.
Okay. Right. Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Any other questions for staff from council? I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thank you. On a motion by Councilmember Gregert and seconded by Council Vice President Emanuel, this item is moved. Is there any discussion?
I don't want to move ahead.
Okay. Councilmember Klinkhammer is seconded. So we had a motion by Councilmember Gregert, seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Having worked out there since 1992, I've seen a lot of development out there, and I've, I've participated in a lot of events at the Expo Center out there and at Florian Gardens. I've seen a lot of traffic, and, and I'm, I'm sure that there will be more traffic. And as Mr. Solberg explained, that as that traffic increases, the adjustments will be made to handle it. It has been handled in the 20-some years that I was, been familiar with it. We listened to the gentleman that owns the property to the west. If he has aspirations of developing that property, then as this property develops, that eventuality becomes more realistic and, and doable, and the appropriate adjustment will be made to that, that end of the road. It, on the west side of 93, along Lorch, it is all commercial now. This development is a, an excellent transition, and as you move toward Lowe's Creek and that property develops, there are going to be some beautiful lots in there that will be single-family homes, and there will be a, a good transition to those. So there's, in looking at the criteria that Mr. Allen circulated, yeah, it's unfortunate that, at least on the initial parts of the development, there, it's going to be market rate, but the cost of those rentals are not part of this decision. And I think that there's, there's no reasonable element in here that would prevent this from going forward. It's a good development. It represents a significant investment in our community. Is everything perfect? Probably not, but it's a good development, and we should go forward with it.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I think, just looking at this development, there are a number of issues that I have with it. I think from my, from my vantage point, the development up on Kane Road is, is, the, the way that that progressed is something similar to this, in that three years ago, roughly, the city council said, we don't like the way that this development is being proposed. And over a number of years, they worked on a different solution, and we, in fact, passed that recently, something that worked better in terms of its scale, in terms of its placement, in terms of its access, and how it fit that given neighborhood. And we passed it. And this is a similar thing for me, in that the compatibility, which is really the main section here, as we're looking at the review criteria, I'm just going to read it. Compatibility of the proposed development with adjacent and nearby existing or planned development in terms of scale, mass, height, bulk, uses, activities, traffic, design, structure placement, privacy, views, and similar, similar concerns, to me, is really the key. We talked last night about the fact that so many of the activities in that area are commercial jobs, specifically... the fact that so many of the activities in that area are commercial jobs, specifically around the hotel industry, around restaurants, and very low-paying jobs oftentimes, moderate to low-paying jobs, minimum-wage jobs, those are the kind of activities that are in that area. To me, that doesn't necessarily fit with a quote-unquote "luxury" apartment of, of this size. I think another thing is the scale and mass of this. We're talking about a development that is right on the edge of one of the most pristine natural environments in our community, the, the county park at Loews Creek, and the impact on that. We're also talking about traffic, and a significant increase in traffic, that I don't believe that we've appropriately planned for. You know, I think oftentimes, you know, we've done a good job in our community of kind of thinking forward, but I can point to examples like the development at ShopCo to just show that, like, sometimes we develop without fully appreciating how much success it's going to have, and that can create the traffic problems that I think that we're going to see at that intersection. I don't think that we've fully thought through, also, what's going to happen to the west. If we don't have, if this is a dead-end road, Lorch, and it doesn't extend, there could be a lot more than what we're seeing in terms of the, the traffic impact analysis here. So for those reasons, I'm not opposed to us having a development, a residential development in that area, but this specific one that we're seeing, I will vote no on.
Any other discussion? Councilmember, I'm sorry. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Council President. This is, this is challenging for me. I, I do think we need more housing, and I, I'm always intrigued by plans that have kind of mixed use. I think that is, is kind of a good model. At the same time, I think I am concerned about the traffic, but also about that county park that's there, and the impact that this development potentially could have on that park, which, you know, every time I've been out there, I've, I've seen a lot of families and, and people using that space, and I would want that to be something they could continue to enjoy. So I'm just kind of grateful for the conversation here tonight as I, as I contemplate this. Thank you.
Council Vice President Emmanuel?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I will be, well, I'll, I'll first share that I, I think that our city has a tremendous opportunity to continue to look at housing solutions, and the people who bring ideas forth and, and work with our community are valued, and I know that we will continue to see that, because we have a wonderful community, and we are continuing to grow, and we have to keep that dialogue open, and to be open to the ideas in which we can accomplish those goals. Those ideas don't just come from, certainly from this table, and also not confined to this room, but really, our community at large, whether they're from here, or perhaps I'm bringing a new idea to us, and, and for that, I say thank you, and that opinion is very welcome to the insight. We need that insight. I do have a very serious concern around the ability for our city to provide emergency services to this development, and just thinking about the unfortunate reality of our, our insufficient levy limits, which lead to deficient staffing levels, and we are aware of this reality. It's a very sobering reality. And we look at an unfortunate event not too long ago, where a medical clinic burned to the ground very fast, and there was, I'd say, a difficulty in the response time, and now this is adding on potentially 500 additional people who are living in a, in a unit and compromised response times. I mean, I, I'm certain that our chief is doing his very best to mobilize and, and align the, the staffing resources, and you can only do so much. And so I, I think that perhaps some time on this would be of value. If this doesn't go through, I, I certainly would encourage and leave that door open to say, let's keep working on this, let's keep finding a solution. But right now, I do see that this really does compromise our ability to provide any emergency services to the facility.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President. So I struggle with how this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I, I poured over our packet and looked online at, at maps in the plan, our comprehensive plan, and talked with city staff today as well, which was very helpful, and an additional email that we received as well, just what the parameters that we need to look at when approving a quest, a request like this. And I just get, I go back to the, the comprehensive plan, which were mandated to fall, follow, and it, it sounds like staff has indicated, well, it says here to the applicant, that the project needs to include a variety of housing types, densities, and building configurations to be consistent with the plan. However, I don't see that in what was presented to us last night and in our packet. What I see is two buildings in the first phase with 65 units each, and so that, that sounds very similar, and then with a future plan of two more buildings, but both being three-story, so four buildings with three-story buildings. So I don't see a lot of variety in the plans, which then goes against the comprehensive plan that we are required to follow. So, and then as the, our guest visitor member of the public testified last night, yeah, I think he has concerns with that, too, where does he, is he going to be mandated with his land to do, because it sounds like he wants to do high-density, so, and is he going to be mandated because our comprehensive plan says so, that he has to do less dense? And so, where's the fairness in that? But I guess goes, which is hard to say in the future, but in front of us, I just have questions that it is consistent with our comprehensive plan. So that's where I'm leaning, so I'm leaning voting no.
Thank you. Councilmember Bergy. Any other discussion? Councilmember Gregert?
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. Obviously, I was able to see this at Plan Commission twice. There was an earlier version that was, that didn't provide adequate detail for the, for me to feel comfortable voting for it initially. Rather, we decided to have it come back to us with a bit more detail later, and I think we have an appropriate level of detail. Obviously, we'd like to know more about plans for affordability, and, you know, the, I think the area that, that has been pointed out, where this development does not, is deficient the most, is, is just that varying of housing types, and, which in itself, like, allows for more, you know, possibilities and accessibility for different people, but it does have a variety of different, you know, it has studios, it has one bedrooms, it has two bedrooms, so that in, in a sense, like, it has some variability there. You know, some of the things I do like about the development and why I supported it at Plan Commission, was that, you know, we, I think there is value in creating neighborhoods that have a variety of uses and have a mixed-use aspect to them, and this really isn't a place that people live right now, but I think it, it's appropriate to have people live next to a park, it's appropriate to have people that live next to commercial areas, and it provides, you know, a certain transition that I think is appropriate between the freeway to the north, which is definitely, has positive and negatives for the community and for our neighborhood. It, it tends to actually reduce access, rather than increase it, particularly for, for transit access or for bicyclists and pedestrians, and it creates bottlenecks for drivers, too, as, has been the main concern today. But I think, you know, we have, our comprehensive plan has indicated that this would be an appropriate area for multifamily development. And, you know, I think, you know, having housing next to a natural area is actually what, one of the things that makes Eau Claire great, and I think it's better than having a car dealership, or, you know, or something like that, next to a natural area. And, you know, so I, I think that, you know, there, there's a variety of uses there. I think adding more variety is better. And I do actually like the way the buildings are laid out on the land, and, you know, it doesn't use a majority, even a majority of the, the, of that, of the land, and, and curves the road away from the park. And I, I do think it's a really high-quality development. Obviously, it's going to be priced accordingly, but I think I, I can support it, and I do appreciate all the other perspectives on council as well. But I think, based on what our parameters are for what we have in front of us, for, for our decision, I, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Councilmember Gregert. Any other discussion?
Actually.
Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Council President. Just want to add something else I didn't before, but I do think, I agree that development, this is an appropriate place for people to live. I think it just needs to look a little bit different, and, and I think the traffic is a, is a concern, as it was brought up before. It's a lot of people and commercials for a road that already gets backed up pretty severely. But I do think that can all be worked out. I just would like to, this is the only time this will be before us, is my understanding, so if there was more clarity in the road work and what the traffic could, the patterns and the study that would be done right now, that'd be helpful to me. But I look forward to seeing more things in the future about what could happen at that site. So, it is a great site, it's beautiful, and be great for someone to live there.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy. Obviously, growth and, and expansion is, is challenging. It can be difficult for communities, what, what comes with it. There are growing pains that, that we all experience when these things start to happen, as we start to push our boundaries out. And I, and I certainly appreciate the concerns with, with our emergency services, and whether or not they can meet that growth. I, I think that wherever we decide to expand and push, and whichever direction it may be, it, it is going to add, you know, stress to, to the, to the infrastructure and, and to the emergency services, whether it's on the northwest or east side. I, I think that, you know, as our continued growth becomes a, a factor in the decisions that we're making, I, I think we certainly will look, you know, as to where we need to start making additions to our staffing and so on, when it, when it comes to meeting those needs and services as, as we continue to grow. There are other developments that, that are pushing off in that direction, and it certainly seems to be an area that will continue to grow to the south, and I, I expect that, that, that will not change. So I, I think, no matter what, we're, we're going to see more and more development in that direction. I know that the parking, I, I agree, is, I mean, we've all been at an, an event or a function at the Floridian, or with, with our family, or friends, or kids at, at Action City, and if all those things are happening at the same time, it can be a challenge. But I, I've seen changes made already with Fleet Farm across the street in that intersection, and, and I think that the adjustments were made to accommodate coming from that direction, and I, I truly believe that the same will be true here, once we need to make adjustments with, when the projects are, are nearing completion. I, I have confidence in that. I, I agree with Councilmember Gregert's comments, that it is a beautiful setting, and, and Councilmember Bergy's, and I think we all agree, it is a beautiful setting, and that in some cases that can be a concern, but, and, you know, again, this is where we would want to see our residential properties, whether it's high-density or low-density or mixed-density. I, I think that's the setting that, that we want to, to make sure that we can at least utilize, and we've done it in our downtown, we've done it in other parts of our city with our rivers and our lakes, and I, I think it's important that, that we continue that, and certainly, the public will still have access to, to Loews Creek and all, that, that beautiful stream and, and river provides us. So, I, I will be in support of the development and, or the rezoning, I should say, in the general development plan. I feel like the applicant has met, you know, the requirements that, that we've asked in regards to the rezoning, and, and I think that, that hopefully, we can support that, so. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
No.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Beaton?
No.
Bergy?
No.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
No.
And that item is defeated. Six to four, is that, that item is defeated, six to four. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 29, which is an annexation. An ordinance in accordance to Section 66.0217 Wisconsin statutes, annexing to the city of Eau Claire, and particularly to the 14th Assessment Ward, Fourth Aldermanic District, being a part of the southwest of the southeast of Section 22710, west and northwest of the northeast of Section 112710, West Town of Union, Eau Claire County, as shown on Planning Drawing Number 19-5A. An annexation ordinance requires a two-thirds vote of the elected members of the governing body, therefore, excuse me, eight affirmative votes of the 11 or 10 elected council members are required. Does council have any questions, or Mr. Allen? Seeing none, and on a motion by Council, Council Vice President Emmanuel, and seconded by Councilmember Beaton, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Lor, did you have a?
Sorry.
Okay. Councilmember Worthman?
Sorry.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 30 is a charter ordinance relating to the city council and the reapportionment, reapportionment of the Aldermanic Districts of the city of Eau Claire. Adoption of the charter ordinance requires a two-thirds vote of the elected members of the governing body. Again, therefore, eight affirmative votes are required. Does that, council have any questions for Ms. Reepall? Seeing none, and on a motion by Councilmember Anderson, and seconded by Councilmember Bergy, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Anderson, did you have? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. We have three ordinances for introduction. Ordinance creating, Agenda Item Number 31, an ordinance creating Section 14-04-dot-110 entitled Led Service Line Replacement, and amending Section 1.24.030 entitled Deposit Schedule of the City of Eau Claire Code of Ordinances. Agenda Item Number 32 is an ordinance amending Chapter 10.20 of the City of, City Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire, entitled Parking Meters and Lots, as it relates to the L.E. Phillips Memorial Public Library Parking Lot. And then Agenda Item Number 33 is an ordinance amending Chapter 16.24 of the City Code of Ordinances, entitled Electrical Code. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up any of these three ordinances? Again, Councilmember Anderson, I think, that's okay. Seeing none, we will move on to announcements. City Manager Peters?
Thank you, Council President Weld. Couple of announcements. A week from Friday is the Chamber's UW Eau Claire Holiday Breakfast, and if you're interested in attending, please contact Kathy, we can get you signed up for that. On December 24th and 25th, City Hall will be closed, and there will be no council meetings. You're welcome to come if you'd like, but there's, there will be no meetings on the, in that case, the, for the, the end of December. And with that, I'd like to wish each of you a very wonderful holiday season, and I hope that for all of you, it's filled with family and friends and compassion and love, and that, you know, we enjoy that, that, that time and that, that break and that season with our families. Finally, I'd like Jerry to stand for a minute. This is his last council meeting. Chief Stanisowski- Chief Stanisowski started with the department in May of nineteen ninety-one, and he rose through the ranks to become our chief in November of two thousand thirteen. And for the past six years, he has led the department to some new standards of community engagement, and he has tackled head-on the challenges of human trafficking, drugs, violent crime, and equity inclusion, not only within the department, but within the community. Jerry holds himself and others to a very high standard of character and conduct, and he handles himself under stressful situations with a tremendous amount of poise, dignity, and confidence, and he's been able to provide that calm reassurance that's needed when we've had times of crisis. Jerry has been a very valuable member of our senior management team, and Jerry, you are going to be missed, and I hope that we can join in congratulating Jerry on a very successful career, and wish him a long and happy and healthy retirement.
Does council wish to share any thoughts or have any announcements? Seeing none, I also would like to, to express happy holidays to, to fellow council members and to staff and to the community, and hopefully, it's a safe and, and happy and, and healthy holiday for everyone, and certainly, a, a, an exciting and adventurous and, and fun two thousand twenty. So, until we meet again in, in two thousand twenty, again, I wish everyone well, and again, to Chief, we, we are grateful and appreciative for all that you've done. So, thank you. If there is no objections, we are adjourned.[1752.01]